You're set, okay. All right, count three. It is actually September thirtieth. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The N C, please, if you go to Mike, make sure the green light.
First come here saying thank you. Thank you for top of the city, et cetera. Bless those who were under
please allegiance.
That's a record, Barry. Member
option this. We have next is public comments. Madam, and take a look at those. The first evening. Natty and Julia Bill. Council, patient safety action, I hope.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, thank you for letting me present to you tonight. I'm here on behalf of Henry County to present to you the Transportation Safety Action Plan. The joint city and county, county plan was adopted by the county earlier this month, and so we're hoping to be able to present it to y'all today so it can be adopted ASAP. And so just a quick overview of what my presentation will be like for you today. I'm going to give a quick bit of background information on what the plan is, what the funding source for the plan is, what the goals of the plan are, and kind of what we've been able to accomplish in the year-long timeline it's taken to develop the plan. And then I'll go into the analysis, the robust analysis that was done to develop this plan, including safety analysis, demographic analysis, and public engagement. And then finally, I'll present to you the three types of recommendations that were developed as part of this plan that also include recommendations that are specific to the city of Stockbridge. So this plan was developed under a Safe Streets for All grant award given to the county in two thousand twenty-three. The purpose of the Safe Streets for All grant is to allow municipalities to develop traffic crashes and traffic deaths from traffic crashes towards a goal of achieving zero. Hopefully, zero or some sort of significant decrease in the amount of traffic fatalities and traffic deaths. In two parts, the first part being a commitment to a significant reduction, and so I'll tell you about Henry County's commitment later on during my presentation. And then also is what I am presenting you today to be adopted. And so this plan was developed by the county, and the vision of the plan is that Henry County and the cities of Hampton, Locust Grove, McDonough, and Stockbridge are committed to improving mobility and reducing modes of transportation in all community members. And the plan has four goals, which are to promote a culture that prioritizes safety. Not improve the maintenance of roadways and facilities and identify improvements that can be implemented quickly to improve safety in county. The plan was kicked off about a year ago, last October, and throughout the year-long process that it's taken to develop and adopt. We have stakeholders all over Henry County. We were here back in April at the Jazz in the Park event, and Ellen has presented several times to the Henry County Board of Commissioners as well as different representatives from the state. The process that was conducted as part of this plan, and please, if you have any questions while I am presenting, please feel free and stop me. Stop me and asked safety analysis to develop, develop this plan. And basically what we did is we pulled five years of crash data. France and looked at it both in terms of statistics and spatially to see where our crashes is happening, what are happening. And so you'll notice that of all of the incorporated municipalities, Stockbridge has the second. Its number of fatal and serious injury crashes is also the second highest. Out of all crashes are a big safety issue in transportation here, and so it's important to identify and do. And so based on on those days, since one part of the Safety Action Plan development is developing something we call a high injury network. Point is to identify what parts of the roadway. So this is across Henry County. Serious injury crashes. And so based on this high injury network, what we did is we developed one else to the high injury network analysis that looks at roads that are similar, kind of like, do they have the same number of lanes? Is the speed limit the same? Are they in the same types of, what can we do to try and be proactive and we even though there's We also did a demographic analysis to what kind of crashes. You can kind of see how, both how crashes are clustered and how they clusterhood. And the demographic need was assessed based on income, rate base and that are affecting areas with height with different demographic needs, and so unsur surprisingly most, but what is surprising is that for pedestrians fatal occurring, seeing concentration of maybe low-income individuals or or higher crash risk if they are walking along the street. Engagement. We did three in-person public priority corridors is by looking at what is the locally owned road? So what road does the city of Stockbridge have authority to develop without state or county assistance? That has the highest number of fatal and serious injury crashes in the jurisdiction. And so for a city of Stockbridge, we identified the stretch of Patrick Henry that runs parallel to I seventy-five and crosses across Eagles Landing Parkway. And there's a lot of different types of land uses on that road. There's a lot of different intersections. There's a lot of unprotected turns. Some segments of a half sidewalk and some segments of a dump. And so we kind of use that as an example to say, these are the types of interventions that you can implement into a road like Patrick Henry. And to see like a significant improvement in transportation safety. So there's a lot of recommendations, and I'm not going to go through every single one of them. But some of them include closing gaps in the sidewalk network so people can walk from the different neighborhoods that are along that road to the different businesses and commercial centers that exist. Reevaluating the speed limit on that road and seeing, is this a road where we can slow people down or maybe kind of add some different elements to the street so that it feels a little bit safer? And then also looking at things like traffic signal timing and making sure if there are places where there's a lot of pedestrians walking from place to place that they're giving, they're given priority at the traffic signals so that they can safely cross the street without having to worry about cars coming. And so that is the exemplary corridor that we developed. And the next part of the engineering recommendations that we've created for you is a safety countermeasures toolkit. So all the different types of things that can be applied in different categories to improve safety along corridors throughout the county. And so there are things like lowering the speed limit and making ADA ramps more accessible in the county and raising the crosswalks and fixing sidewalk connections and adding speed tables. And a big one that was called out by a lot of the residents in the community was pedestrian lighting and making the roads more well-lit, especially in the roads that are like a little bit more rural and a little bit more, a little less bright and more shaded and have more trees. People were really interested in improving the lighting conditions in a lot of roads. And so that's one of our recommendations included in this toolkit. So we've prepared for you this toolkit, and I'll give you a couple of examples of what the toolkit recommendations look like, and you can see the whole toolkit in the entire plan. But basically, we kind of pulled in all the different types of interventions, and we made sure to tailor them to what the county can do and what is specific for the county. So things that can be created quickly, things that can be done within a reasonable budget and a reasonable amount of time. And then give, gave a little bit of background information on how to go about implementing them, where to implement them, and what you need to do to be able to prioritize these interventions. And so the final piece of this plan is a, a set of policy recommendations. The first one, and the most important one, being the moving towards zero policy, which is that crash reduction goal that I talked to y'all about earlier in this presentation. And so Henry County, along with stakeholders in the county and leadership from representatives from the different municipalities, decided that because the county is growing, we're seeing a lot of people moving into Henry County, and we're seeing a lot more traffic and a lot more development. Then a full reduction of crashes is of crash fatalities is just not feasible or affordable to do in a reasonable span of time. So the county opted to set an ambitious reduction goal of sixty-five percent. So we want to see A, that trend of increasing crashes to start decreasing. And B, that number to go below sixty-five percent of what that number is right now. And so the goal the county had was to reach that by the end of two thousand fifteen. That policy was adopted September third of this month. And then along with the moving towards zero policy, we have four different policy recommendations for the county, the first one being a complete streets policy. Henry County has adopted this complete streets policy and encourages municipalities to look into it and do the same. The county has a template if the municipalities are interested in looking to, looking at it for guidance or using it as a reference. We also recommend updating the city and county Unified Land Development Codes to explicitly mention and prioritize safety in transportation. We recommend working to look at the freight network and maybe develop like a freight transportation safety plan. And finally, to improve first responder coordination practices, so making sure that EMS, police, news media, anyone who's there at the site of a crash kind of knows how to address and react to the crash in a way that improves the health and safety of the overall community. I know that was a mouthful. I really appreciate y'all sitting and listening to me. I have the information for my project manager and Sam Baker, who is leading this at the county level, in case y'all want to email them with any questions, but I'm also answer, here to answer your questions today.
I appreciate your briefing. A couple of things that come to mind, you, you mentioned that about pedestrians on sidewalks and obviously to me, and you mentioned as one of the recommendations that, and we're looking along those lines of increasing the sidewalk network and pathways within the community itself, curb and gutter to help people stay on the, on the right path and not into the streets in this aspect to keep them away from getting hit by cars or things of this nature as well. And of course, if you even go down Rockaway Road right now, you see that we're looking at here, traffic supports, timing, and lights, lighting, all those type of things will take into recommendation and in sense and see how we can fund that. I'm gonna stop at that point, and I want, I want to turn it over to Mr. Alexander, because I'm pretty sure he wants to talk about Patrick Henry.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
Certainly, Patrick Henry, that's a, that's an awesome, that's a corridor that we look to have some amazing things happen. So keying in on that, I think that's So some of those gaps in the sidewalk, there's two construction projects, three of them, matter of fact, two city and one county in place. The senior home retirement community is the county project. And then we have a gated community coming at Holloway Road and Patrick Henry as well that will have a ten-foot path connecting to the Encompass. Excuse me. The Encompass already has a sidewalk next to it, so that will definitely be connected. And on the other side of the road, there is a mixed-use development that's going to be starting construction very soon that will be able to connect to the senior housing community that the county completed. So those sidewalk networks certainly will be able to be closed as far as that is concerned. We have some additional development coming at Country Club Drive and Patrick Henry, where there will be a four-way intersection there. And it will help with traffic calming because there will be a traffic signal that is there with the new hotels that'll be coming to that particular area. So we've been kind of operating on the complete streets model because the complete street model include pretty much everything we've been doing. It includes the paths, it includes the street lights. It includes the beautification. So certainly, we've been trying to, you know, going down that mode, actually requiring them. I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether we passed a policy or not, but it sure would be good to have the model policy to take a look at because that's how we've been operating with every project, including the sidewalks and the mobility issues. So that certainly would benefit us in having a cohesive policy connection with the county and making these particular projects happen. It's interesting, again, certainly, I had Clayton Cartt, he was at my town hall, and we were talking about certain corridors like this one. And he certainly did mention in the current Sfloss, we have a design for Patrick Henry Parkway widening project in there, Jodaco Road as well, and several others. So it's good that the, the team in Sfloss and the county transportation were being very proactive and, and understanding where we were going and putting, this plan probably helped them to identify the areas that needed to be completed, but we're, hopefully, we're well on our way and certainly encourage the partnership to continue. Because we know Patrick Henry Parkway is going to be super busy in certain areas. We know in the city like Flipping Road certainly needs to be widened. Walt Stevens needs to probably, needs to be widened. So as well, so because everybody knows that shortcut. Jump off at X two twenty-eight, navigate Spear Road and Walt Stevens and Flipping. Certainly, we just seen that we would identify those for the transportation improvements to continue going. And as the close, I'll close by saying, as the mayor indicated, we were very proactive, especially in the Rockaway Road widening, showing up to the G dot town halls and saying, we want paths. We don't just want sidewalks, we want paths too. We see you give those paths to the neighborhoods on the north side of the city, but it seems like we get a little cheated when they come to those projects. But they finally heard us, and now every project that they complete, like the Highway Twenty project, every time I drive by it in McDonough, you can see that ten-foot path going right along it, and it looks amazing. Thank you.
It's very good, please.
Again, thank you for this presentation. I'm, I'm really super excited about what you have shared with us tonight. Specifically because the bulk of what you have shared runs through the heart of District Three and Stockbridge, right on the Rockaway Corridor, which is the, the primary space for our medical gateway right here at the Henry Medical and P. Bond. And so I think that's a well, well-placed, well-strategized place to start this transportation plan. And so it really beckons that we will really see this as a, as a needed, needed support and needed partnership as we have really three districts that, that share the Rockaway Road, Patrick Henry Corridor. I know Councilwoman Barbara will share her sentiments in a few moments about her, her district and, and, and the aspects that it will connect, bring connectivity for her as well and her district. But I'm, I'm super excited because we have, yes, the medical gateway there, but then we also have some opportunities and potentials with the trails as well. With a large piece of nature preserve right there, right behind my subdivision on, that goes between Rockaway and Eagles Landing Parkway. And the, the trails would be an added aspect of that that would kind of enhance and And the trails would be an added aspect of that that would kind of enhance and pretty much give us an opportunity to partner and do some things in that area. But then when we talk about just moving in along with all of the other residents that connect, when we talk about Banks Road, and we talk about Red Oak, and we go all the way up to 42, this is just a wonderful, wonderful earful to hear that the county is willing to invest this into Stockbridge. And I think as much needed as we do grow and we do see, you know, population growth and development growth in our area, I'm super proud to be a part of it. And so at that point, I just want to say thank you.
Ms. Barbara, you have any comments?
I wanted to ask about that table you shared.
Yeah, which one?
The priority corridor.
This one?
Yes, the eight most crashes there. When was that data reported?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
The data that you have there, the number of crashes?
What, as in what is it and where it is?
Was it?
Okay, so this is from.
What time period?
Yes, so this is from 2019 to 2023, which were the previous complete five years of crash data prior to starting plan development, because we started in the middle of 2024.
Thank you. That was the only question I had. Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, great, thank you.
No other questions? So I would imagine you don't need an action for us this time. Mr. Anderson, you need to come up, Ms. Aaron?
We're just asking mayor and council to adopt the resolution that Henry County and the rest of the municipalities have adopted.
Okay, so you need a motion for that then to join in?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Is there a second? Ms. Barbara seconded that from Mr. Alexander and Ms. Barbara, all in favor, please indicate. Okay, you have a decision. Thank you, you have it. Thank you very much, appreciate you being here. Next presentation, Drone Delivery Services in Stockbridge, Georgia, Connecting the Future. Mr. Anderson, it has your name here, sir, please.
Good evening. We'll have Wings and Walmart come up and give a presentation on the proposed drone delivery project in the city of Stockbridge.
Okay.
So they'll be coming.
Okay, Ms. Anderson, you're here. You have something to answer this time?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of give a quick overview of how this kind of came to be. Walmart reached out to us about this particular opportunity. We had heard about it before and wanted to learn more about it. As we sat through the meeting and heard about the different things that this particular project brings to the city, we thought it was quite interesting. So we definitely wanted to bring it to your attention, kind of some of the ideas they have. We always looking for ways to make us more accessibility to our residents regarding access to products and services and anything to put us forward thinking we thought will be a good addition to the city of Stockbridge. So we excited about you guys hearing more about this particular project because this is definitely the future and where to go. And I was just blown away by the safety record because that was one of my biggest takeaways, was the safety concerns about this particular project. And I was just blown away by the safety and the reviews across the country for this particular project. So we extremely excited to hear for you guys to learn more about this particular project and have your questions and go from there. So welcome.
If I could, real quick, Ms. Anderson, you come up real quick, and maybe Mr. Anderson, you can stand there too, certainly ask. Now, in our conversation, because I had called and kind of asked about this, basically, I think, Ryan, you made it clear certainly that this, basically, it was really regulated by federal.
Yes, sir.
And that's kind of what it is. And basically, our ask is not a real approval, but to just kind of understand what's coming to the city and to partner with them.
Yes, sir. We'll be up on item number seven to give a presentation on our regulations that we did in consultation with the city manager on regulating this process in the city of Stockbridge.
Right, thank you.
So, good evening. Thank you for having us here, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Glenn Wilkins. I'm the Director of Public Affairs and Government Relations for Walmart. I just wanted to do a quick introduction of how we got here, how Walmart got into this business. I'm sure you all know Walmart. We've been in Stockbridge and Henry County for a long time. We've enjoyed our relationship with you all, and so thank you for that as well. At Walmart, one of the things that I've learned over the past 21 years working for Walmart, in retail, you have to know what the customer wants before the customer knows that they want it, right? I go back to a perfect example is Amazon Prime. We never knew we wanted Prime until they said, oh, we can deliver this to your house in two days or less. Son of a gun, if that wasn't right. You know, we didn't even know we wanted. Now we wonder how we live without it. So as Walmart worked on that as well, as how do we deliver to the customer, we had a Walmart pickup. We decided we could do the shopping, we could have the customers queued up, they can kind of park in their space, stagger that out, bring the groceries to them directly. They don't have to get out of the car, make it more convenient, make it hopefully a better shopping experience. As we moved from pickup, we moved to Walmart delivery. That took off well, but really what kicked that off was unfortunately was COVID. But people really did enjoy having their products delivered to their home. So as we worked through the Walmart delivery side, we started looking for the next thing, obviously drones. We were having a conversation with staff earlier about, we always talked about it, right? You know, we sort of joked about it, delivery this, that, and the other. Well, here we are at this day. I also do like to say that the expectations from our customers are that we are providing them with the newest way of receiving their product. I tell people I come from, I'm a Gen X, I come from, I call it the microwave society, right? I get that Hot Pocket, I put it in the microwave, three minutes later, I'm burning the top of my mouth, things are good, you know, and I'm moving along. My kids are Gen Z, they're 23, 24, and they're of a 5G society. They open it up, they hit the buy button, and they expect it on the front porch almost instantaneously. Well, it's not only the Gen X, my father who's 84, he does all of his ordering on Walmart Plus, and he expects it to be delivered at his house too. So it really does span a lot of generations. We love being on the front end of it. We're also very, very excited to operate, as Steph said, with such a great company that has a great history. So I'm going to leave it at that, and Catherine can tell the story, and we have members of our team that can answer questions as well. So again, thank you very much for spending your time.
I have a question of you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Certainly, I thank you. And certainly for you to actually come into the city to talk to us certainly is awesome. And certainly that you chose the city of Stockbridge for this particular project is monumental for us as well. Could you talk about the process a little bit of selecting Stockbridge?
Sure. So currently, we're only operating in one city in the nation, Walmart and Wing Partnership, and that's in the North Dallas area, Dallas, Texas. So we've been operating there for the past four years now, have had great success with Wing and with customers accepting it as well. We decided we wanted to move into other states. As we did that, we looked at those other cities we wanted to go into. So we selected Houston, Texas, Tampa, Orlando, Charlotte, and metro Atlanta. In metro Atlanta, what we did is we looked at, one, how the stores were performing, but also how was our Walmart Plus customer base? And I don't know if y'all are members of Walmart Plus or know about it, but it's like Amazon Prime, you pay $95 a year, we deliver to your house for free, you get preferred times for delivery or pickup, whatever you want. So the numbers on that grew, and it showed that there was a strong support, not only of Walmart customers, Walmart Plus customers, but the potential and the growth that's going on in this area.
So there's a lot of users in this area, basically.
There are.
Okay. Great, that's awesome. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Catherine Lovett. I am with Wing Aviation. I'm the local policy and community affairs manager for Wing, and I'm based just up the road from you guys in Atlanta, Georgia. I'm also joined here today by my colleague, Tariq Rashid. He's our head of flight operations, overseeing our flight operations team and our FAA requirements as a company. And then I also have Zenobia Haynes, who is here, she is our permitting manager for Wing. And then we're also joined by Brian Pelham, who is from Atwell, who is the engineering team that supports Walmart for their real estate project. So we've got the full team here for you today to answer any of the questions that you all have about this project.
Yes. Is your mic on? Is the green light on?
It's on.
Yeah, so speaking.
Okay, I'll get a little closer. Okay, sorry. So again, I'm Catherine Lovett, if you couldn't hear me, and I'm with Wing Aviation on the local policy team. So we're really excited to talk with you all today about Wing Drone Delivery. And I realized that the video, let's see if I click. It did a pop out, so I don't. Can I start this?
Just check, we got fiber, it ought to run.
So it's in that, it switched to YouTube. Yeah, so is there a way to switch over to that? Okay. Yeah, that's great, we don't need the sound. So this video that you all are seeing now is showing you the Walmart Supercenter in Texas. And I'll pause here just a little bit so that you have some references we're talking today on what I mean when I refer to a nest, N-E-S-T. So this store is one of our first locations in the state of Texas. We, again, started partnering with Walmart in Frisco, Texas, which is about 30 miles north of downtown Dallas. As you see here, we started with Walmart Supercenters, and we're doing the same as we come to the state of Georgia for the metro area, which would include the city of Stockbridge. The fencing area that you all see. The fencing area that you all see at. Each drone has a pad that they're tied to, and we'll talk about that more in the presentation. But I just want you all to remember that as we go into the presentation and talk a little bit more about the Stockbridge store. Now, for the Walmart customers here in Stockbridge, they would be able to place an order in the Wing app. There's a full catalog of thousands of items that have already been preweighed and vetted specifically for drone delivery. At the store, once your order is placed, it will get assigned to a drone, and then the order gets loaded onto the drone, as you see here. The drone was hovering at about 20 feet in the air, and is now going to climb up to a cruising altitude of about 165 to 200 feet, and then it takes off at a speed of about 65 miles an hour to get to your home. When it arrives at the resident's home, you will see here in the video that it never lands on the ground. The drone comes down from that 200-foot height to about 20 feet, where it's going to hover, as you see there. It gently unhooks the package using a little bit of gravity. You have been tracking the order in your app. You know when to come outside to receive it. The drone will then return back to its nest at the store. And then, as you see here, it will slowly lower, and it's going to land on its assigned charging pad to recharge for the next order. So let me see if I can. Sorry, I'm not familiar with Teams. Okay, there we go. And then here.
And this video is available online currently?
Yes. And we've shared. All right. Sorry about that. Okay, so this image here shows you all, and we'll jump ahead again. There we go. Shows you a close-up of the aircraft that you all see here today in front of you. So this is our 7000 model. This is the actual drone that you all saw in the video and would see here in the city of Stockbridge. We are an OEM, which means that we are the original equipment manufacturer at Wing. We started back in 2012 as a company in Google, and then in 2018 became an Alphabet subsidiary. So as part of that process, we not only design and manufacture our drones, but we also operate them as well. So everything that you see here on this drone has been built by a fantastic team of aerospace, mechanical, software engineers within Wing. And then we roll these out to each of our store locations that you all will see in Stockbridge. The drone itself only weighs 11 pounds, and as you see here in front of you, it's literally wrapped in styrofoam. It's designed to be lightweight and low-impact. The drone also is all-electric, so there's no concerns about CO2 emissions. And then we've even built the aircraft to really focus on safety for residential communities. So for example, the propellers that you see on the top of the aircraft have been built out into quadrants. If one or two propellers goes down, the aircraft is still able to stay in the air. Similarly, on the base of the aircraft, during that delivery process, you all saw the tether that the drone was lowered down on. So if you can see here at the base of the drone, you see that little yellow frame, that's what we call the pillow. So that's what the tether has on the drone. So as part of our safety features, if during the delivery process, that tether gets snagged on a tree or a bush, or if Ms. Wilson's dog runs out from next door and tries to grab on that tether on the drone, anything that pulls on that more than once, it will simply detach the tether from the drone. So the drone stays in the air at that 20-foot height safely, and then the tether just softly floats to the ground. So we've built all of that, again, to be really intentional about making sure that we're not only keeping the drone safe, but keeping your residents safe, and residents safe in every city where we operate. Another thing to note is that the package weight capacity is about 2 and 1/2 pounds. And then the drone, the range, the maximum range one way from a Walmart store location is six miles. Now, when we launch operations at a site, we will typically start at about a four-mile radius from the store location to make sure that we're doing proper flight validations and testing. And then as we grow the surface, we can expand that range as needed. And then lastly, as mentioned, the speed for the drone gets up to 65 miles an hour. In addition to our safety features on the aircraft, we at Wing are federally regulated through the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration. We are certified as a Part 135 air carrier, and we're rated for package delivery similar to other commercial carriers, like, you know, if you heard of VPS or FedEx. Now, for us at Wing, we are focused only on drone aviation and drone delivery for small packages. So we're not going to replace your full grocery order with that 2 and 1/2 pounds. It really is, again, for those small items. Another thing to note, as you see here on this map, the purple circle in the center is what we call the Mode C veil. So that's the 30 aeronautical miles that surrounds the Atlanta metro region, which includes the city of Stockbridge. Now, you'll notice on this map that there are some reds areas that are kind of shaded in. The one you probably noticed that covers East Point, that is, of course, the Atlanta International Airport. So as part of our FAA regulations, we, for example, always stay below a threshold of 400 feet. Anything above that height is considered commercial airspace. So we're making sure as part of our regulations that we don't enter commercial airspace where Delta and other airlines fly. We also make sure that we're setting up barriers or geo-restrictions for the aircrafts so they're not entering any of those airspace areas for municipal airports, international airports, as well as things like Dobbins Air Force Base. And all of that, again, falls under the guidance and regulatory processes from the FAA. You'll also note as well that we do not operate within three nautical miles of any public use runways or landing areas. So that could include, you know, helipads at a hospital, if the police or fire department, for example, had a drone unit, or if you had a helicopter pad at your municipal building, those type of things. We can also set up similar geo-fencing around those areas to make sure, again, that we don't enter that space. Similarly, for municipal buildings such as City Hall, prisons, schools, we do not enter that airspace without written permission from the, sorry, we don't deliver to those buildings without written approval from the government. So for Mayor Ford, if you really wanted to get drone delivery here at City Hall to maybe be able to order lunch, we would work with you to set that up, but we wouldn't automatically do that without the council's approval. Okay. Another thing to note as part of our FAA regulations is that the drone here that you see is autonomous, which means that there's no one back end with like a joystick or anything like that. So what happens is that when that order is placed with the drone, it is then going to get assigned to the drone, and the drone uses those GPS coordinates for your address to build out its flight path to and from your home address. Now, with that in mind, we do have on the back of each aircraft, you'll see there's a little antenna that's sticking out. So our drones also have an antenna that supports ADS-B software. Basically, what that means is that the drones are able to squawk out their position, so they're visible on radar for other operators. We also have a fantastic team of pilots, they're known as pilots in command, who are FAA-certified professionals. They have their part. so they're visible on radar for other operators. We also have a fantastic team of pilots, they're known as Pilots in Command, who are FAA-certified professionals. They have their Part 107 certification through the FAA that allows them to monitor not only our aircrafts at each store location, but also they oversee the airspace that our drones are moving in. So they're able to monitor for everything from other helicopters to other drone operators. They're also, again, monitoring that altitude that the drones are moving at. Again, all of that making sure that for each store, we have a pilot that is monitoring those drones in real time while we operate. Currently, for our operations for our Walmart locations, we only fly during daylight hours. So we currently do not have approvals to fly at night. That could come at some point in the future. But of course, we would make sure that we're communicating that to you all in advance once and if those regulatory processes change. So currently, for daylight hours, we know that daylight savings time is coming up. So right now, our drones are flying until about 7, would be flying here in Georgia until, let's say, about 7:00 PM. And then once daylight comes, we would shift that back to maybe 6:00 PM as the days start to get darker. So again, a lot of our regulatory processes, we're really proud of, in addition to the safety features that we've built into the aircraft. An additional one that we think is important to note are the optical lenses that are located on the drone. So each drone on the back of the aircraft has black and white lenses that are used for depth perception when they're coming in and out of the nest, and also during that delivery process at a residential home. So if you remember in the video, the cruising height for the drone is 200 feet. When it arrives at your home, the drone uses those optical lenses to measure the distance from the ground to make sure that it's staying safely at that 20 to 25-foot height, and then lower the tether down. So the big thing to note about those lenses, and I can show you where they're located. You'll see here on the drone, these little circles, those are the lenses that the drone uses. And this is not a real drone that would have a storage, it's just a model that we disassembled for you all to be able to travel. So again, those optical lenses are solely used for the navigational or vision awareness for the aircrafts, and making sure, again, that we're keeping that aircraft safe when they're coming into the communities. Now, a big thing to note about the cameras on the drone is that there's no audio and there's no live feed. So our pilots who are working remotely cannot physically see you during that delivery process. They're only able to see the airspace that the drone is in at that time, but they can neither hear nor see any of your residents when they're at their homes. So we understand that questions about privacy are always important to every community, and we always like to make sure that as a company, we're very transparent about that for each of our cities that we operate in. Another big question that we get about the drones is the sound profile. So this image here that you're seeing has a few features that I'll call out to you. So again, focusing on Wing and being focused on residential drone delivery, we've really worked with our internal team to make sure that the aircraft blends into traditional neighborhood sounds that you would find in a residential community. So you'll see here for the drone, at 165 feet, which is, again, is around that cruising altitude for the aircraft, the, the sound decibels for that are at 56.5. And so you'll see here on this scale that at that cruising height of 165 feet, the sound of the drone is quieter than a microwave in your kitchen. Now, when the profile does increase, or that sound profile increases, it's during that delivery process when a drone lowers from that cruising height down to about 20 to 25 feet. And at that height, you'll see here that the sound profile is about 65 decibels. And even at that height of 23 feet, the drone is still quieter than a sedan that is moving on the street 50 feet away from your house at 40 miles per hour. So we've really worked for many years, again, since 2018, since we've launched, to make sure that our drones are blending into everyday neighborhood sounds. Now, we know for communities, first time when they're getting drones into the area, you will have some people that are not familiar with the sound. But over time, we've been really proud that the drones have been well-received over time once people understand what that noise is, because it's not something like a leaf blower or a car. So it's something that sometimes people have to adjust to. Now, for the city of Stockbridge, as you all are thinking big picture about your residents and how drone delivery can support them, one of my favorite things about working at Wing and our partnership with Walmart is that we've been able to see the benefits that drone delivery can provide to diverse communities. As Glenn mentioned, we have 15 stores and 15 cities in the state of Texas. So Dallas, Fort Worth, Arlington, and everywhere in between that we've been operating in for Walmart Supercenters. And it's been amazing to see how customers have adopted to using this service to overall improve their quality of life and access to goods and things that they need. Our number two categories of items that people order currently from our stores, the first is fresh food and produce. So blueberries, strawberries, bags of spinach, the pre-made salads, the cups of soup that you can get from the Walmart deli. And then the second, second is over-the-counter medication. So every, as we know, we're heading into cold and flu season. You'll have sick kids coming home from school. And so rather than having to drive 15, 20 minutes one way just to get to the store for those small items, we're able to get those items to you in under 30 minutes. On average, our customers in Texas are getting their orders, depending on how close they live to the store, in about 10 to 15 minutes. And I believe as of 2 weeks ago, we just hit 2,000 orders in 1 day for the DFW area. So that lets you know that we're doing hundreds of orders per store per day for our locations in Texas. We also have seen a really big adoption of our service from the 55-plus community. A lot of those residents are using our service 3 to 4 times a week because the traffic is stressful. They don't like to drive, some can't drive anymore. And so the drone delivery option has opened up access to them, again, to the supplies, over-the-counter medications that they need. Now, important things to note, we do not deliver prescription medication, so just only over-the-counter items from the Walmart pharmacy. We also do not deliver any flammable liquids or goods, so that can include alcohol, tobacco products, even, for example, hand sanitizer, it is flammable, so that would be something that we would not deliver. The important thing to note, however, is that all of the items that would be available for drone delivery have been pre-weighted and vetted. So there's nothing in the catalog that would meet those requirements, such as prescription medication or flammable goods. So you're unable to order them in your cart. Another important thing to note for the convenience process for your residents is when you're placing your order through the app, you are able to select your delivery spot at your home. So for some residents, that could mean their front yard, it could mean your backyard, it varies. But you're able to confirm the delivery spot on where you want the drone to deliver your package at the home. And before you check out, you're also asked to confirm that that delivery spot is clear of any pets, children, vehicles, and then you're allowed to check out. So we've built a lot of those safety features, and even just to the delivering, the ordering process that customers have found, again, that makes this process very convenient, helps to keep them safe, keep people off the roads, and helps to reduce the traffic congestion, accidents, and all of those things. So with that in mind, I wanted to jump in, and we can talk about the site specific to the city of Stockbridge. So you'll see here on the screen, if you can remember back to the video, that fenced-in area that I refer to as the nest. So this rendering here is showing you what that looks like. So again, there is going, for the Stockbridge store, we would have 18 drones and 18 charge pads. We've intentionally set that number because it helps us to support that order volume during business hours. We typically see an uptick in the evenings. We think when people get home and realize they've forgotten pasta sauce or need cold medicine. So the number of drones is intentional to make sure that we can rotate the drones out, allow them to recharge in between orders. The charge pads as well, and we'll see a close-up of that, helps to make sure that we're not sending out a drone if it needs to recharge. We have enough in rotation to keep the order volume moving. And so again, we often get questions about battery life. Because we have the charge pads in the nest and the drones are sitting on those during full operating hours, they are always charging. So we never run into any concerns about a drone's battery dying mid-flight or anything like that. To date, again, Wing as a company has been operating since 2018, and we have been flying in Australia, we've flown in the UK, Finland, Ireland, and here in the US. And we have an excellent safety record where for all of those communities in our. We have not had any incidences with bodily harm or head-on collisions with any property, homes or vehicles. So that's something that hopefully gives you all some reassurance for the city of Stockbridge that we are very proud of at Wing as a company. Another concept that we are bringing to Stockbridge that we are really excited about, again, keeping safety at top of mind, is the autoloader. Now, for the Walmart employees that work at the store, they may not have their FAA certification to work inside of the fenced-in area that is the nest. So the autoloader is a concept, and it's the fenced-in area that you see here that would be set up in the curbside pickup area of the store. So as you all probably know, the Walmart employees who already fill the orders walk out from the store to cars to deliver packages that customers have placed. The same will go for the store with the autoloader, where this fenced-in area will allow the Walmart employees to walk in. They would then load the package here in the middle of what I call the bunny ears on this structure. And this physical, I'm sorry, this physical structure here with the Y arms and this stand, that is the autoloader. Now, the drones, when they fly over from their nest, they are able to then hover, and they use those black and white lenses that I showed you on the drone. They use these big QR codes here to identify which autoloader they've been assigned. So the drone will hover, it finds its assigned autoloader, it then will fly above, lower the tether down, it picks up the package, and then heads off to your home. So this is a hands-free delivery system to keep your Walmart employees in Stockbridge safe, and also make sure that the drones are safe, but still maintaining that goal of getting you your orders in 30 minutes or less. Here's a close-up of what the charge pads look like at the store. This here is what we call, again, the ChargePads 18-pad Nest, and that just is a close-up of that. Now, for those charging pads, we do utilize a battery energy generator to provide power to make sure that the drones have battery life. This generator, important to note, it does not require diesel. It is basically a big battery. So just like the battery packs that you maybe travel with and plug into your phone on the road, it's a very similar concept where this is brought in by a company, it's put into the inside area of the nest, and then it's used to charge the pads. Once this generator runs out of battery power itself, it is then swapped out for a new battery. So we've made sure that, again, we're using something that has a lightweight footprint for the nest and doesn't require flammable items such as diesel, which is not ideal. Here is a close-up of the fencing that we use at the nest location. This is just showing you a structure that we have in the state of Texas. But the fencing that we use is a black metal-coated fence. It's about 8 feet high. We utilize this to make sure for safety reasons that Walmart employees or people at your, at the store are not wandering into the flight area for the drone, where the drones operate. And as I mentioned before, this area inside of the fencing, it's an active flight line. So if you think about the tarmac at the International Airport where individuals like myself, and you may not have FAA certification, we would get in trouble walking on the tarmac. The same applies for the fenced-in area at the nest, is that we want to make sure that we're maintaining all FAA safety requirements inside of that fenced-in area. So we utilize this to make sure that we're supporting that. If you go to any of our Walmart stores in Texas, you will also see the drones doing systems checks, just like you would see for an aircraft where they're testing their propellers. And so when they do that, they're hovering at a height of about 8 feet. So the fence height is very intentional, as well as the structure of the fence to make sure that we're keeping the drone safe during operating hours. Now, for the drone storage, this is the structure that you all will see and hear in Stockbridge. And so we call this a drone pod, or a kiosk, you may hear that phrase. But it's wood, wood construction, and this is solely used for storage of the drones at night. So once we end operations for the day, our technicians that work at the nest will put the drones inside of this. It gets locked up. The fenced-in area has keypad access as well as cameras for safety reasons. So we make sure that we're keeping the drones safe overnight, and then we pull them back out in the morning. And so with that, I will turn it over to the conceptual site plan. I can pause here, we can, if we want to transition after there's any questions about the technology.
Well, I'd have some questions, actually. I'm pretty sure the rest of the council does as well. First thing you already answered, I was wondering about the weight limit, but it's, I think, he said 2 and 1/2 pounds?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I might have missed this next question, but you'll answer this. In climate weather, high winds and rain, how does this work?
So I will have Tariq come up. Again, he's our head of flight operations, and so he knows that, front ways and back ways.
All right, go ahead, please.
So, thank you, Mayor. So the, the aircraft itself can fly in what we call up to heavy rain in practice. So we fly moderate rain, so it's kind of hard to, as a person, to gauge that, but we use a meteorological equivalent. If you, like, are okay, if it's raining so, so much that, you know, you, you might be okay, like, walking to your car without an umbrella, we can fly in that weather. And then we have some certain ceiling and visibility requirements. Generally speaking, the weather can be not great, and we can still fly safely. The, the temperature range, we can, we usually operate down to freezing temperatures. So if it's 0 or 32 Fahrenheit or above, and then we can fly basically all the way up to about 104 degrees Fahrenheit as an upper temperature. And then winds, we, it's a pretty wide range. You definitely, the number's about 20, 15, 20 miles an hour for the winds. So pretty, pretty stiff winds, and we can still safely operate.
How about birds? How do you deal with birds?
So birds have not, they, they, generally speaking, they don't seem to mind the drone. We've had, there's a good video, if you Google it on YouTube, of a raven in Australia going after a Wing drone. The bird was actually on the drone's tail and was going after the tail. The drone is robust enough, and its flight control system is robust enough, that it was able to safely complete its flight, even though the bird was, was kind of attacking it. One way we avoid that is when we know about, like, nest, like, especially, we have actually a requirement for certain protected birds that we have to actually stay away from their nesting areas. Otherwise, we try to identify where nesting areas might be and stay away from them generally. Otherwise, we don't ever seem to have problems with birds.
You might have mentioned it, so I'm, so I've got to reach back and maybe catch this. For per-delivery, what's the cost factor to the individual that you're delivering a package to?
So that's a two-part question. I can also have Glenn come back up. So to launch the service, we will be launching in the Wing app. And so for the Wing app, you can go to your Google Play or your Apple Store. There's no upfront cost for delivery for that when we launch the service here in Stockbridge. And then at some point, it will transfer, transition over to the Walmart Plus app, and I'll let Glenn explain that part of the process.
So right now, there is no additional charge to have it delivered by drone. There is no, so there's no delivery charge, and there's no up-charge on the merchandise. So if a box of cereals $5 in the store, you're charged $5 to have it delivered to your home. It all remains the same.
All right. I got plenty of questions, but I'll open it up. If you're willing to take questions, I'll, no, I'm. Okay. This way? Go ahead, please.
What is the, what type of product, most popular product you see the drone is actually carrying? Because 2 and 1/2 pounds is not a lot.
Yep.
Walmart, you go in there, you want to buy everything, so.
Yeah, so we have people who order everything from rotisserie chickens. That, when we started out, that was a very popular item. We have people that, again, order from the produce side. So everything from those market salads on the Walmart side, fresh produce, like cartons of blueberries, strawberries, bags of spinach. Then we also see people who just order candy and powerade and, you know, some of those small things. And then we also heard from customers who order one-off things. So I've met, she was actually a city council member in Texas, and was at home with her family during the Final Four and was making guacamole and realized she was out of avocados, and so ordered a bag of avocados. Or I've met a very nice woman who it was her first time going out since having her baby, and we had girls' night, she ordered a tube of mascara. So it really is, you'll see customers are ordering a little bit of everything. We also have a fantastic couple that ordered with us for years during COVID. They're called the Sinsmires, they're in their 80s. And so when the pandemic hit, Mrs. Sinsmire was caregiver to her husband and didn't want to go out. And so they started ordering their morning coffee and having it delivered by drone. So you'll see that a lot of people, depending on what their needs are, are using it for those small things, even back-to-school supplies, cat food, you'll find, you know, Band-Aids, baby food. So all of those different items are available in the catalog.
And I'll add this as well, is that if there is an order that goes over that limit, as you look, if you've ordered from Walmart Plus, it'll say, "Do you want a pickup? Do you want a delivery?" We will have that button then where it is for drone delivery. If you go over that, then the recommendation will come back, "We're happy to deliver by car if you would like." So if they, even if they try and game the system and do 10 separate orders, you know, there are times that they'll have to wait in between that, and then we make that recommendation. They might get 2 or 3, and it says, "It looks like you might want to order more," then, you know, we can deliver that way. So we will continue to deliver just through different formats.
Yeah, let me just say this, see, as the crow flies, I need 6 miles. Because the 4 miles is not going to get me, okay? Because I'm in Joda Co Road, exit 222. This is exit 228, that's it. But as the crow flies, the 6 mile might actually get me in there. I certainly would like to be one of the users. You know, Stockbridge has a lot of landmass as we go from exit 228 to exit 222. So hopefully, that 4-mile limit won't be long. Right, Hudson Bridge is actually. Hudson Bridge is actually closer to me, but I think, of course, you're using North Henry Boulevard at this present time.
Yeah, so what we are working on is that our team, when we, I'm sorry, when we set up operations, we'll come in, once we've confirmed that the city does want to move forward with drone delivery, Tariq's team, they'll do, we have a team, a part of our flight operations team that will do an assessment of the, the store area. For that area, we're going to be looking at all of the single-family properties that are eligible for delivery and they'll identify those as part of the process and build that out. As Tariq referenced before, we do make sure, for example, like nature preserves or any wildlife parks, we're looking for those type of things, as I mentioned, hospitals, municipal buildings. So we'll build that out once we get a little bit closer, working with the review process with the city to then map out what that area would look like for delivery. Now, beyond the six miles, we are working on a new rollout for a new drone. It's the 8,000 model drone. So imagine this drone here, but twice the size. It'll also have bigger propellers. The weight capacity for that will be five pounds, which is, so you'll be able to fly further and get bigger packages with that drone. So we don't have a confirmation on when that will be rolling out, but I just want to assure you that we are definitely working to get the drones out further to get more people drone delivery that want it.
Okay. The next thing I will say, obviously Walmart is doing a great job with diversity. Looks like Wing's very diverse, too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We have a fantastic team of engineers, coders, I'm on the government affairs team, Tariq has a background in aviation. We also have pilots, our pilots as well come from military backgrounds, commercial pilot backgrounds. So we're, it's, we're a unique company in that we're not just for a delivery or, you know, package delivery company. We also are an aviation company and we balance that kind of unique world as a company, which is pretty cool.
Well, it's just good to see that. So certainly, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
I have a question when it comes to like, a lot of our neighborhoods have a robust tree coverage area, especially around the front doors and stuff like that. So how would, even with the tethering and the drop, how would it handle, say, a home that has a lot of limbs that, that overarches the access point for the drop?
So the, the first thing we do is, we have a detailed survey, so we, we actually able to automatically see where there's clear areas. So the first thing that happens is like, we don't even place a delivery zone unless pre-surveys have determined that there's a clear area. We need about maybe six-foot radius, so maybe like a 12, yeah, something maybe like twice the size of that table, maybe. And then as long as there's a clear column that the drone can come down in, it, it can come down. Even if like, for example, let's say you, somebody's driveway, they, they did have a clear area and they happened to park their car there, as long as there's a little bit of room to the side, the drone can actually detect that there's a car there and, and shift to the side and they can deliver the package next to the car. So we don't need a lot of room, but we do need some clear area, like some vertical area that all the way down to the ground that doesn't have any obstructions.
Am I to assume that the sensors actually sense electrical lines and poles like this as well?
Yeah, they can detect power lines, trees, tree limbs, et cetera. So basically, as long as there's a limit to how far it'll, it'll shift to the side because we don't want to shift to the side into something else. So the, the drone, if, so hypothetically, is coming down and there happens to be like a, a tree limb or some power line sticking near the, the delivery zone, drone will detect that and it'll shift to the side a little bit. And then as long as there's still sufficient clear area beneath it, it'll go ahead and complete the delivery. Otherwise, it'll actually abort the delivery and just climb, climb up and then return to the Walmart.
I'm also assuming as it's flying to its destination, I guess it's the sensor sees, forward? Yeah, moving forward, whatever, the sensors must pick up where the lines are, poles and things of that nature as well.
Yeah, so for, so, so for that, that, what I was describing only applies to like the last delivery phase. For forward flight, Wing actually does several layers of preparation beforehand. We actually do LiDAR surveys of all of our intended service areas. And so we have detailed depth maps. So we, beforehand, we know where the power lines are, where the trees are, and we actually, that data goes into our flight planning system and the flight planner actually plans the route so that it's clear of all those obstacles. The only thing that like, if there's a, a transit, like if somebody puts up a, like a telescoping crane like over a building, that's not in our planning system, but the way we handle that is that we fly minimum distances above buildings. We essentially stay at least 50, 50 feet or so above any building. And then also, we monitor for that kind of activity. But the, the short answer is that we, we have data, it goes into the planner and the planner automatically plans around those power lines and stuff.
Any other questions? Okay, so you wanted to continue on the presentation then?
Yes. So what we're seeing here on the screen is the proposed conceptual plan for the fenced-in area that is the nest. So here is the front of the store. You'll see this red area here and here, so this is just the inset showing you a close-up. So this is the fenced-in area that again is referred to as the nest that would house the 18 drones and the charge pads, plus that kiosk or the drone pod that would store the, the drones. That drone pod goes inside of the fenced-in area with that generator. And then over here on this side, on the southeast side of the store, and this inset here, you'll see, so these are those curbside pickup parking spots for the Walmart customers. And you'll see this green dotted line here is where the Walmart staff already walks out to fill the orders here. So we're putting that auto loader to the side here, making sure that it's not blocking this drive aisle to the parking, to the loading dock for the 18-wheelers. And so the Walmart staff would be able to stay safe, out of traffic, load the packages here. The drones would fly then, once the order has been assigned from the nest over to this auto loader, it picks up the package hands-free and then it heads off to the customer's home. As I mentioned before, we do hire locally, so a part of our process for each of our store locations is that we also make sure we're hiring FAA Part 107 technicians to support the nest. So we are actively look, starting to look for and posting positions for the Atlanta metro area, which I am super excited about, to make sure that we have, again, proper technicians and support on the ground here locally that will be able to support your store for the aircraft maintenance and also make, maintaining the interior operations of that nest area, which again is this red area here. So happy to answer any questions that you all may have about the setup.
I appreciate, I appreciate, we all appreciate the presentation. I guess in a sense, maybe I'm dumbfounded here, what do you specifically need from us tonight in this aspect? Do I, I don't know if I need any type of legal opinion on this?
So I think, I think from the team, from your leadership team, we were here to make sure that you all have the information that you all needed, not just about the drone technology, but also understanding our operations for both Wing and Walmart. And then I believe the planning department was going to offer some additional context on their recommendations. We met with them maybe four weeks, three weeks ago to provide this same presentation and to also review this site plan. So next steps would be recommendations from the city on how to properly permit the site. As mentioned, for the nest setup that you see, we're bringing in the fencing that, again, that black metal coated fencing, that's simply bolted into the parking lot. We don't do, we try to avoid any land disturbance. Similarly, for the auto loader area, that also has fencing around it, and then we load in and erect those two structures for the package loading. So from there, that's where we're looking for your guidance on. For the fencing, the generator, as well as for the drone pod or the kiosk to store the lock, the, the drones, your guidance, I guess also from the planning department on how best to do that, to, to make sure that we are compliant with all ordinances and requirements for the city of Stockbridge.
Ms. Alexander, I mean, Allison, I'm sorry. Anderson, Ryan, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Ryan, come forward.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Well, yeah, no problem. Thank you. Don't go, don't go away now.
Okay.
Don't go away. All right. So she just spoke on, so I mean, what are you, what are you going to recommend?
We're coming up on item number seven on the agenda to give a overview of our draft regulations pertaining to drone delivery.
Okay, that's coming up later on in the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So you all, any, any, you got any more questions for them at all? No, no, we're good. Well, we'll talk about it further than item number seven, but thank you for your presentation. Appreciate you. Thank you very much. All right, good deal. Drone, okay, back up forward, where are you? Okay. New business, council consideration to approve the annual contract, okay? RFP 2025-0006, on-call water and sewer emergency operational repair, maintenance and construction services to professional pipeline, primary site engineering secondary, an amount of $400,000 from FY 2026 stormwater budget. Contract to begin January 1st, 2026, in account numbers 510-42500-542515 stormwater repair. Mr. Aaron, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. We come before you tonight to ask for your approval of our annual on-call utility contractor for the past eight years. We employed that service, which has been very beneficial to us. They repaired some major water leaks for us, made some stormwater repairs. And like a lot of utilities in the area, Henry County and Clayton County Water Authority uses on-call utility contractors because they have access to equipment and supplies that we might not have during normal business hours. And this, this was bided out, site was our previous vendor, so this was recently bided out. And this time, we're going with two vendors. In case one is unavailable, someone is unavailable, we'll have another one that we can call. And we're just asking you to approve this vendor, which is Professional Pipeline, as our primary vendor in site engineering as our secondary vendor.
Okay, questions? Go ahead, sir.
So this was, you said eight years and then you said there was a recent, so when was it the last time?
It's been, it's been bided out several times since I've been here for eight years, but I was saying for eight years, we've employed the services of an on-call utility contractor.
Right, so when was the last time?
This was bided out this year. Let me go through my documents. It was, it was open on May 1st, 2025 and closed on June 1st, 2025.
And both of these individual, you said there's two companies were selected?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so these were the two companies that were selected?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anybody got any questions? Go right ahead, please.
Mr. Aaron, is the cost proposal included here? That's exhibit I, I didn't see it. I see the scoring sheets, but I don't see the cost proposal or fee schedule or price list. And the reason why I asked for those is because, just to put it in the record, just in case if there's any contract disputes or price discrepancies, that kind of thing. So that's why I look for the cost proposal or fee schedule or price listing.
I can get that information and submit it to you from procurement, but I didn't have it as part of the packet that they provided to us. We just have the scoring sheets.
Okay, so I know that during the evaluation process or even after the evaluation committee makes their recommendation, they typically provide copies of the cost proposal. So you didn't get it?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you, sir.
Well, there were only two that submitted and we were choosing two, so based on the proposal, both of them were chosen.
So where did you get the 400,000? Is that a not-to-exceed amount?
Yes, ma'am. And the reason why we do that, because if there's an emergency that far exceeds, like if we did it for 100,000, then we would have to come back before you to get it ratified. But we typically stay under this budget. We just want to have it available in case, like if a water main broke on North Henry Boulevard, it's going to get, be expensive.
Yeah, I get that. I was just curious about the pricing.
Yes, ma'am.
And they normally have fixed pricing and that would be included in the cost proposal. But thank you, sir.
Any questions from the council? Well, if that's not, no, no questions, I need a motion to accept this, prove it.
Mayor, I move that we approve the annual contract, RFP 2025-006, for an on-call water and sewer emergency operational maintenance, construction services to professional pipeline primary and site engineering secondary in the amount of $400,000.
Okay, Mr. Alexander, second that, all in favor, please indicate. Oppose?
I will abstain, sir, and I'd like to add a comment if I can.
All right, so one second before we do that. So three, zero, and one, it passes. What's your comment, please?
Okay, I'm abstaining because the recommended awardees' cost proposals or their fee schedule or price schedules are not included in the packet. I look for the price schedule or price sheet or fee schedules as a way to document what their fixed pricings are, just in case if there's any contract disputes or invoice discrepancies, we will know what that is, but we don't have it. Mr. Aaron has provided a not-to-exceed amount for this contract award, but it's just not enough for me to make a decision. So thank you. That's it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this amendment, a recommendation made to me that would take text amendment, which is item number seven involving the drone delivery facilities, and move it up to, to discuss it now. And that way, if that's, if that's the case, you agree to that, that way we don't leave, we don't have these, ladies and gentlemen, waiting to the entire meeting for that discussion. So is there a motion to move the text amendment to dealing drone deliveries to handle that now at this point?
Yes, sir. Second.
Okay, from Mr. Barrett and Mr. Alexander, all in favor, indicate? Gives you an analysis, okay. Oh, Mr. Anderson, so what we've got here, we've got text amendment, case TX 2025-03, first reading, citywide, consideration of text amendment to the Unified Development Code, UDC, to allow and provide regulations for the use of drone delivery facilities and services by businesses with approved special use permit. Mr. Anderson, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor, this is, is a draft presentation to give city council an opportunity to address any concerns they may have, to make changes. We hope to get this adopted on the 13th city, regular city council meeting. So here's a timeline. We met with, with Wing and Walmart in July 2025. So we also, we had a pre-application meeting, but we don't have, we didn't have, really have a formal process. So after that first meeting in July, the city manager.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
With all due respect, is it necessary for them to have to come back? I mean, honestly, because in the regulation, I mean, what do we know about drone delivery? I mean, it's going to be something that the experts have put together. They've been doing this all over the world. So why would it be, we're going to make, the council is going to make some suggestions for them to change it. It sounds reasonable.
No, sir, Councilman Alexander, but there's still some regulatory processes that the city put in place, so we want to make sure that council is satisfied with that. So for instance, they'll be placed on our regulatory business list and they'll have to apply for a special administrative permit, go through a special administrative permit process, after review from the community development department and final approval by the city manager. I just wanted to brief you guys on that process, but it's governed by the FFA and there's, and there's no need to go through the public hearing process, but we still need to adopt these regulations so we can charge our fees.
What I'm saying, our, our part, what is it that we are having to do but having to wait?
But the city council has to do?
Yeah.
You have to grant the city manager authority to approve these, to approve the fees, the charge, the special administrative permit fee and place the drone delivery on our regulatory business listing.
That's what I'm saying. What, what's keeping us from doing that tonight?
You don't want to hear the presentation. I mean, you can do it tonight. I mean, it's, it's okay with me.
I'm just saying, I don't know what's going to come back. We just had a presentation that lasted about an hour.
Well, I can go through this in three, four minutes, so it, it isn't, it, it won't take long, but.
I would suggest we at least go through the presentation.
Well, I want to, I want to go through the presentation. I just want to know, I, I just, I want, I just wanted to understand whether or not we could vote tonight versus having.
Yes, sir, you can vote tonight if you want, if somebody makes a motion.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see.
Okay. Let me speed through this. So we'll be amending.
I certainly want to hear the presentation.
Okay. So we'll be amending Title IX of the Unified Development Code, Licencings and Regulations. I shall be amended to add a new section called 9.116 entitled Drone Delivery Services, which shall read as provided in the, in the attached exhibit that we will provide with the ordinance. Approval to amend the UDC Title 12, Title, Chapter 3, Use Regulations 2, including new section 3.2.42 entitled Drone Delivery Services. And also approval to create an administrative special use permit. And it's, an administrative special use permit process is hereby created for the purpose of reviewing and approving drone delivery services within the city of Stockbridge. Here's a definition of drone delivery. So the previous presenter provided information on that. So this is a zoning use regulations chart. So drone delivery will be allowed in C2, C3, LI and HI with a special administrative permit signed by the city manager. These are the use standards for the commercial drone delivery, which is basically placing some design criteria on that, on that list what she described in the earlier presentation to make it acceptable to our design guidelines and criteria. Since this is regulated by the FAA, there's no need of taking this through the special use permit process, the public hearing process, or the normal zoning process. So the applicant, the previous presenter presented on noise restrictions. We basically adopting things that they had in their proposal. So if you heard all that, so security, they will be required to have a flock camera for 24-hour monitoring, and they already stated that they would operate now. We're proposing 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but since they're proposing that they might do night delivery, we might amend that process to go up to maybe 12 at night or something like that. And basically, the permitting process, drone delivery shall be permissible by a special administrative permit. So the city manager wanted us to come up with a fast and efficient process of approving these special administrative permits for drone delivery, and that's what we did. So the process will be like the Community Development Department will review the applications and all the information contained within the application, and we will make a recommendation to the city manager, and then the city manager will be the ultimate deciding factor. Application requirements must be submitted by the property owners, submitted to the Community Development Department, special administrative use for me, special administrative permit fee of $600, a regulatory fee of $1,500. Must include a site plan, operational details. And also, we're requiring two public meetings in the impacted area. Wings will have to come out and present maybe two meetings to the affected target area. They have a six-mile delivery radius, so we want them to touch as many homes within that six-mile radius just to let them know about the drone delivery program. Community Department, Community Development Department shall review and recommend to the city manager. The city manager has the final approving authority. So that's it.
Well, I have some clarification, night delivery. I thought, what I heard is that normally it goes to 7:00 PM, but based on the daylight savings time, it may change. But so I want to get clarification on that because I thought you mentioned, sir, something about nighttime, so I just wasn't sure, clarification on that.
Well, the young lady said that they may in the future.
Okay.
Do I have the nighttime delivery? So we just want to extend that delivery time from, from 8:00 PM to maybe 12:00 PM to the hours, to operating hours at the store. So that would be the only change to this presentation.
Okay, which means it has to be in the actual regulatory guidance in.
Yes, yes, sir. We just, so when we, when we write up the ordinance, we'll include that. We'll have, we'll set the time in the final.
All right, so, yes, ma'am.
Yes, daylight saving times, I mean, like 8:00 PM is usually when it get dark in daylight saving time, so. But she's, I'm just saying in the future, she stated that they may do night delivery, which means like 10, 11 o'clock it'll get, it's get dark during daylight saving time, so. But right now, we don't have to do that, but I'm just saying in the future, if they want to move to nighttime delivery, that mean we'll have to come back before you to get this order amended. So I just wanted to include it in now, just in case, to future proof it. Yeah.
Questions down here? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you got, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Okay, so the renewal process.
Yeah, so if it's a, if it's a regulatory business within the city of Stockbridge, it would have to be renewed annually.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any questions on this way?
Yeah, certainly, thank you for that. And you're putting everything together. So pretty much, basically, there will be a special permit as you've indicated.
Special administrative permit process.
Administrative permit, so basically you will be able to make sure that that happens.
Yes, sir.
On your end.
Yes, this ordinance will grant us authority to issue a special administrative permit. The Community Development Department will review the application and make sure they are in compliance with all our regulations, and then we'll make a recommendation to the city manager. The city manager is the ultimately, is the ultimate decision maker on this process.
And then you'll be bringing, you were, you was wanting to, the regulation would be, it wouldn't just be for them, it would just be pretty much for everybody.
Anybody, like say, for instance, UPS, Amazon, anybody that wants to do drone delivery in the city of Stockbridge, they will have to comply with this ordinance.
Okay, so subsequent, they would not have to come back, we would just need to vote.
Yes, the city manager will make that decision, yes, sir.
Okay, certainly. And during that time, they would be able to work through the process?
Yes, sir.
Maybe have the community meetings and everything in anticipation, knowing that that was coming?
Yes.
To be able to have that happen. So simultaneously, as we make that approval, then they would be able to basically be ready to go.
Are you talking about what they have to, after we adopt this ordinance, they won't have to come back to city council anymore? It will be handled by the Community Development Department in tandem with the, with the city manager.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, in terms of, you know, at this point, what would basically have to happen is you would administratively be able to do that. But in the meantime, they will be able to go ahead and move forward with setting everything up and all of that. And then you, before they got their basically CO or operation, then everything would be passed by us.
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Anderson, you want to chat, you want to chat?
You have something, Mr. Anderson, as well?
I think, I think you covered it pretty well. And to your question, Councilmember Alexander, yes, we'll set up that notification with the community as they go out and talk more about this, similar to the presentation they gave the night. So while that paperwork kicks, kicks in, we get it codified, so on and so forth. By that time, we would be in position to go ahead and approve that special use thing and everything works out. So hopefully have this thing launch sooner than later. That's the, that's the, that's the plan before the close of the year.
That was my concern, I just didn't want to hold it up. And, you know, have them, have them make another trip back unnecessarily.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you need a motion for us to go forward on this?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
One other question, I don't, I don't know if you know the answer or not. They may have, we say we approve this, we go forward, okay? How many other cities actually in, in Atlanta, Missouri are doing this?
I think Stockbridge will be the first in the.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get clarified, we would be first, really.
Yes.
I'll be darned, okay, cool.
Yeah.
All right, cool.
So the city manager wanted us to streamline this process so we can get moving.
All right, well, well, I'll tell you what, I need a motion, council. Okay, is there a second?
Mayor Ford.
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask that we also include in the condition authorizing them the ability to deliver to government buildings? She mentioned that. I mean, we might want, we might need a vegetable tray.
I don't know, do we need to bring her back? I don't, I don't know if he can legally do that or not.
Yes, she, she said in a briefing, what would happen is we'll just write a letter basically authorizing them that it is authorized, because what happens is when they pull it up on their map, it'd be geospaced out. But with that letter, they'll be able to remove that barrier to allow delivery here.
Just allowing authorization, giving authorization to allow delivery to government buildings. Just need to add that.
It needs, does it need to be in the motions? What you did, does it need to be in the motion?
We'll modify, we'll modify the ordinance.
Yeah, we'll take care, we'll include.
We'll put that language in the ordinance.
All right, so you have a question, sir?
Before vote, I need to disclose.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sir. I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, prior, prior to voting, I do need to, for the record, disclose that I am a Walmart staff member and a stockholder. And so I needed to legally disclose that on the refrigeration and facilities maintenance. I'm a stockholder and employee of Stockbridge, so. I mean, not Stockbridge, Stockbridge and Walmart.
I need a legal opinion on that, I guess?
I had to disclose I'm a Walmart refrigeration tech associate and a stockholder.
Oh, who would know? Small world, can learn something. He can vote?
Yep.
Okay, legally you can vote, all right. Okay, it's on the record, you can legally vote. So I think it went from you, Alexander, to Mr. Barrett, to second that motion, is that correct? Okay, all in favor, please indicate? So you now have a decision, congratulations, outstanding. We're going to be first. Oh, man, hey, wait, wait, come on now, we're going to be first, all right, all right, all right. Man, make my night, okay? Council consideration approved the annual contract RFP 2025-004 for on-call sidewalk repairs and replacement to CGS LLC in the amount of $300,000, funding from SFL 6, contract to begin one in January 2026. Mr. Aaron, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the last several years, Public Works has engaged the services of an on-call sidewalk contractor, and we repaired an average of about a mile, mile and a half of sidewalks throughout the city. So on April 28th, a bid was placed for the on-call sidewalk contractor, and it closed on May 29th, 2025. We had 10 vendors that submitted proposals for this project, and the evaluation committee evaluated all of the proposals, and they recommended that we go with CGS LLC as our annual on-call sidewalk vendor, and we're budgeting $300,000 for a maintenance and repair of sidewalks throughout the city.
Okay, council, any questions for Mr. Aaron?
I do.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, please.
Same with this one, Mr. Aaron, the cost proposal or the fee schedule or price list is not included. But I also noticed the evaluators, all of them are, well, except for one, two, are from Public Works. But I just wanted to note that for the record. I think it's best that when we are scoring these, that we include people from other departments, so it's not just one-sided. The exhibit I, the general concrete work or bid form and cost proposal wasn't included. I am going to abstain from voting on this because of that. But also, I noticed the evaluators, there were six, six of them and two of them were not a member of Public Works, the other four were. I noticed with the evaluators of this, there were six evaluators. Out of the six, only two of them were from other departments. The other four were from Public Works. And I remember a few years ago when I discussed this, that, and I don't know if it was by resolution or if it got adopted in the procurement policy, that we'd make sure that we had a mixture on the evaluation team. We didn't want all of them or the majority of them coming from the very department in which they were recommending the award. That was the other note that I mentioned. That's all, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, for clarification, you, basically, this contract is citywide to repair sidewalks. The cost is basically built in because you have no idea how many sidewalks that they're going to repair. They go out and do the inspections and what have you, and the cost would be basically whatever they go after they examine the sidewalk to determine what needs to be done, right?
There's a price sheet, but what we do is budget-driven. So it's based on, we give the contractor these amount of sidewalks, which would add up to that amount, $300,000 or less. Our goal is not to exceed the budget, so it's pretty much budget-driven. Our sidewalk repair is going to be done according to what our budget is.
Right, and if you go over that amount, you would have to basically come back to us to.
To ask for additional money.
Amounts, but indeed, you still don't know until they get out there and actually start doing the work, what the, what the final cost is going to be, so.
Yes, sir, that's it, that's a part of the list, we've got a list. And when this gets approved, we working on a list already, and it's been approved, and we're just waiting for the vendor to get started for 2025.
That has been like six months, why didn't the other contractor take?
Because GDOT has technically changed the way sidewalks are repaired, and so we've got to comply with that. They're saying if you go in and repair a section, they want you to go in and repair the entire sidewalk. So instead of, we go in and do it to sidewalk is 50 feet if they want you to replace the, and so, working through that new regulation. I could send you a copy of it if you would like.
Okay. And in our last, our project, has that estimate been completed yet? Of course, we did, we would not have time to, to review it tonight, but you, so it has been completed?
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll present it at the next meeting.
So, okay, so basically, in terms of this particular East Atlanta Road project, we would have that personally would be available in SFL 6 when we're collecting SFL 6, or it would be available for the million-dollar bond that we have sitting in the bank for the last three and a half years that we have completed no sidewalks for or trails. Because this is a trail project in downtown, and there's a million dollars literally sitting in the bank to do that with, and with the council approval. And this, and my question, I'm sorry, excuse me. Now, certainly, this is a situation where we should be able to save some money. We know if there's an, that the on-call sidewalk provider, we're paying $300,000, should be able to be, might, might be able to complete this project.
That's what the cost proposal for that sidewalk, the East Atlanta, North Henry, is based on the cost for the on-call sidewalk contractor. So you can have one or two choices, either you bid it out or go with the on-call sidewalk contractor.
So that needs to be sent out to everyone. So certainly, once we take a look at it, and then you'll be able to bring it to the next meeting if we had a chance to review it.
Yes, sir, we'll have time enough to review it by then.
Okay, all right, well, I certainly appreciate that, and that'll, that could be a shovel-ready project. And as in terms of what we're doing here to be able to move forward with it, I know the one over the Model Mile Trail, are they going to be able to compete for that? No, or Pathfinders?
I, I think Path would be working on that, but one thing we got to remember too, if you do, not want to get off this, but if you're going to do that 10-foot path, we got to get those easements.
Right, certainly, okay. Well, all right, well, that makes sense for us to be able to get things done here around City Hall where we had anticipated using the bond funding in order to do that, but certainly it would need brought to, you'll be bringing that to council with the estimate for us to be able to take a look at that. And we should assume that the on-site contract, on-call sidewalk provider would be the one providing the service for us.
That's an option if you so choose.
Okay, what are the other options? We would bid it out?
You'd bid it out.
Okay, all right, well, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am, go ahead, please.
Mr. Aaron, do you have a copy of the price schedule or the price sheet?
I can get it from procurement. I don't have it with me.
Okay, thank you.
Once again, other questions? All right, then I need a motion, please. Is there a second?
A second.
From Ms. Alexander, Ms. Scan, all in favor, please indicate? Okay, you, you abstain?
I will abstain as well, and if I can add a comment.
Well, actually, if that's two, four, zero, and then two abstentions, then motion fails, okay? And your comments are?
Well, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, this, we, we need a sidewalk provider.
Mayor Ford.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, just comment, please.
May I ask Mr. Aaron to, can you bring this back at the last, the next meeting and include the price schedule? Exhibit I, which was the general concrete works bid form, whether cost proposal and price sheet or fee schedule? And again, the reason why I'm asking for the cost proposal or price schedule is because I want to get it in the record just in case if there's any contract disputes or invoice discrepancies on down the line, not saying that there will be, but I just wanted on the record, just to have it.
Okay, Mayor, motion to withdraw, and, and motion to withdraw and to table this to the next meeting.
Okay, sir, well, first of all.
I can second that.
Okay, you can second that, I just want to make sure you've done what your comments.
I have a question.
Okay, motion to withdraw has been seconded, all right? And before we take that. Motion to withdraw has been seconded, all right, and before we take that vote, what is your question, ma'am? Uh, Ms. Barber seconded that motion to withdraw.
I have a, I have a question in regards to this agenda item. The actual repairs and replacement of sidewalks, it's kind of like you do with the streets, you scale to see which ones are needed more than, and more so than others, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you able to get quotes on each individual one at this time, or how does that work? Because, I mean, and you say, you basically say, we have this pool of money, and we'll do as many as we can with this pool of money, is that what you're saying?
So what happens is staff go out and identify the sidewalks that need to be repaired or replaced, and we submit the list to typically Falcon, our on-call engineer, and they go out and scale and measure everything, and then they come back and submit it to the on-call contractor. Based on the unit prices for each of those items, then they generate a cost for each of those repairs. So it might be all of the repairs come up to two hundred thousand dollars, based on what the cost and pay items per item, like if you're doing ADA compliance, there's a cost for that. If you're removing tree roots under a sidewalk, there's a cost for that. If you're removing concrete, there's a cost for that, then there's a cost for the replacement of the concrete. So there are cost items associated with the project.
And do you already have a list of sidewalks that we're doing this year?
Yes, we do. We have a list already.
So you, you would be able to get, because I'm trying to understand what councilwoman Barbara's asking, you would be able to get a price sheet, basically a schedule sheet on what those costs are? They already have Falcon already come up with the estimate or scale?
I think what she's talking about is the price sheet that they submitted with their bid and saying to replace X amount of sidewalk, if there's no roots, it's just cracked, it would cost this to remove that panel, and it would cost this much to pour back the panel. I think that's what she's asking for, but we typically, what we're doing is, is based on the budget. Okay, there's three hundred thousand dollars. We go out and they measure Falcon do, and then based on the cost for those repair items, then they generate what the cost is going to be, and they come back to us and say, okay, it's under budget or it's over budget. If it's over budget, then we trim some things off and move it to the next year when we have additional funding.
And where is that price sheet?
That price sheet, like I said, it was a part of the bid packet, but I just, the information that was given to me, we didn't have that as a part of the documents that we uploaded, and I'll get that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Also, when we come back, can we, can we get a, I guess, a thorough assessment of what side, which sidewalks, and specifically like how extensive the damage is at each location? Can we get some type of report out on where we're strategizing the funds and repairs to go?
So the repairs are based on, we had an analysis done of our streets and sidewalks, and that's our guiding, our guide, because we wanted to take subjectivity out of it, because somebody will look at something and say, hey, this needs to be repaired, but based on the evaluation, it doesn't. You know, so we're doing those based on whether it's a trip hazard, mainly whether it's a trip hazard, and that's how we go about deciding, but the sidewalks are chosen based on that evaluation and rating we did, just like we do for streets.
So they're rated by, by staff?
No, sir, they're rated by our engineers, went out and did an evaluation of all the streets and sidewalks in the city.
You good, sir? Good. Okay, go ahead, please.
I wanted to confirm what Mr. Aaron explained about the price sheet. That is correct. That is exactly what I'm looking for. That whole price sheet that you just explained and described, that's why I'm asking for it. Thank you, sir.
And the motion was to table this item to be brought back to the next meeting.
And, and Mr. Barry seconded that? Oh, Ms. Barber seconded, excuse me, Ms. Barber seconded, excuse me. Ms. Barber seconded that, so all in favor, motion, please indicate. Now, decision, okay, good deal, thank you. Okay, council consideration approved a purchase of, what is this, phosphorus, CC two zero five zero, remove chemical from Cedar Cam in an amount of sixty thousand dollars. The funding source is from the Sewer Department budgeted funds. Ms. Aaron, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As a part of our wastewater treatment process, we have to remove phosphorus and get down to the limit of zero point three zero milligrams per liter, according to our permit issued by EPD, and we need some additional chemicals to get us through the end of this year, so we're asking to increase. We have money within the budget, but it exceeds the city manager's signing authority, so we're asking your approval to purchase additional chemicals.
Okay, motion?
So move.
So move. Second, Ms. Barber seconded that, all favor, please indicate. She's now with the decision, okay, fantastic.
Thank you, sir.
You got a comment?
Can I just say that the sole source was verified, so thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay, next is council, thank you, Mr. Aaron.
Thank you, sir.
Council consideration to fill vacancy of Downtown Development Authority Board to fill an unexpired term through thirty-one December twenty twenty-seven. Ms. Sanders, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The Downtown Development Authority currently has two vacancies on that board. This item this evening that's before you will address at least one of those vacancies, and so the recommendation that I'm making is that you consider Mr. Tariq Collins to fill that vacancy. He is, he has joined us this evening, and I don't know if you all would like to have him come up and introduce himself or ask him any questions, but he's, he's certainly here this evening, and so that is, that is kind of in the nutshell what this one is all about. We are working with the DDA Board to vet some additional candidates to fill that second vacancy as soon as possible, but at this time, we have one, and this vacancy would fill an unexpired term through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-second, two thousand and-
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, and so if you have any questions, I'll attempt to answer them, but if you'd certainly like to be introduced to him, as I said, he's here this evening.
Anybody?
Yeah, I haven't come up.
Introduce yourself and tell us about-
Yeah, Ms. Collins, please come forward.
We, I thought we had a discussion about this, and I'm excited, but what I'm saying is we're doing the procedure different from what we normally would do.
Okay. He just offered, I suppose, and-
Yeah.
He just offered?
That's not what we normally would do.
And we normally just go ahead and vote.
Yeah, well, at some point, we used to go into this discussion, not that that matters more than we have opted to require, it's highlighted here.
We're good.
Apparently. It's highlighted that we require some type of resume or something. And I'm all for, I see there's some information up here about business and financial expertise. No, no offense to you whatsoever, I, I would support the vote, but I think that- Oh, it is included?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, then I'm good. I just want to make sure it's done right, because I don't want no problems.
For clarification, as you remember that, the gentleman is a District Five business, business owner, so.
Yeah, well, I, I just want to make sure, because I don't want any issues and anybody saying that we did one one way and one another. That's the only reason why, when I looked in the book, it wasn't here. That's my only reason, but I'm okay, long as it's there.
Ms. Collins, you want to introduce yourself, sir?
Sure. Good evening, I'm Tariq Collins, owner of the Eagle Financial Group, the accounting firm over on Eagles Landing. I've been, I guess, what you want to know about me, military veteran, Army vet, business owner for some time. We work with other business owners as far as growing their companies, from CFO services down to tax prep services.
Okay, and I have to admit, he's been, seen me in a couple of times during Meet the Mayor, so excellent candidate. I don't vote, this is tied, but that's excellent candidate.
I appreciate it.
No problem, sir. All right. Council, any motion, please?
Yeah, Mayor, as the, as the DDA liaison, I'd like, I'm sorry, say your name one more time.
Tariq Collins.
Right, I'd like to nominate Tariq Collins as Downtown Development Authority member.
I second.
Okay, well, okay, Ms. Alexander and Ms. Gant, all favor, please indicate, in case you announce a decision. Thank you, sir, appreciate you. Okay. What is next? Appointment, what's next, appointment of Councilwoman Ilana Barber to council liaison to Stockbridge Main Advisory, Main Street Advisory Board through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Mayor.
Yes, once, by Ms. Farad, please.
Point of order.
What's the point of order?
Okay, certainly, the issue is this, okay? And before we proceed with this, we already have a representative to the Main Street Board that is Councilman Thomas. Councilman Thomas has neither resigned nor been removed from that board position, to my knowledge, by a vote of this council, so the position is not vacant at this time. I find it highly insensitive and inappropriate to replace a sitting board member who is out because of a medical condition in this state. We appoint the board members in January, which is after the expiration date of Councilman Thomas's term, and as, as someone who has served with him and shoulder to shoulder with him, the least that we could do is to give him a couple more months at the end of his term, since he's not resigned, and this board to, for this board to even consider removing him with two months to go in his term, which his distinguished service to the board would be inappropriate, and if he did tend to his resignation in the condition that he's in, I wouldn't, I would not vote to accept it. I would not, because he has put his time in on that board religiously and represented it at every turn, and how we got here is, I don't know how we got here, because in the end, he's still serving. He's, he's still a member of this council. He's still a member of the Main Street Board, he's still an official member of the Stockbridge City Council, and as this is concerned here, I find it objectionable, and I find it very insensitive to even consider this nomination at this point when Councilman Thomas has needed a sign or been removed. And as I said, even if he did in his current medical state, I wouldn't do it. I would wait till January, and I would let the new council make that decision, because it was, it's the right thing to do. As we journeyed through downtown Stockbridge, we talked about Councilman Thomas in a heartfelt way, as we journeyed through his district, and we went to there, and we went by his house, and to think of even forcing him out-
Stand by, please.
Ridiculous, and I, and I see it as very insensitive and just being in a situation where it is about me, it's not about him, to not be able to wait till his term ends twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-five, and then say, I want to just do it right now.
Mayor Ford, point of order.
Because this certainly was not brought to the council.
Stand by, please, stand by.
As we indicated earlier, that it requires, the coun, this is a council appointment, and a council appointment requires-
Like to ask legal-
That we have three members of this board-
Point of order.
Agree-
Sir.
And to the appointment or to accept somebody's resignation, and to try to appoint somebody to a position that's not currently open is something that I do. But like I said, I'm going to close by saying, even if he would issue his resignation under the person's circumstances, I wouldn't accept it, because he only has basically about ninety days left in his term before we appoint a new representative, and with his distinguished service, he deserves that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Barber, go ahead, please.
Mayor Ford, I call for a point of order.
I know you did, go ahead, please.
And when I, when anyone calls for a point of order, you are to hear.
Acknowledge, acknowledge that.
I had called for a point of order. I was doing a point of order, so mine took precedence, and I gave it. That's what you were doing.
Hold on, I understand what you're talking about, Ms. Barber. Go ahead, what's your comment, please?
So when anyone calls for a point of order, sir, you are to hear the point of order. The reason why I asked for a point of order is because Ms. Farid has not even presented the item.
I understand, I was, I was going to get her up here.
So I, I wanted you to acknowledge the presenter of the item.
Sure, she was getting acknowledged, I was going to do that.
Will you please allow her to present this item before we-
It's totally insensitive.
Hold on a second, hold on.
Totally inappropriate and insensitive with a current council member that is serving.
You already said, you already made your comment, so it's like, Ms. Farid, come forward, and Megan, you're going to have to make a legal opinion here. I need a legal opinion from you in reference to this. Come make your presentation, please.
Before that, I asked for the legal call, because in essence, we're making a presentation which is inappropriate on Councilman Thomas's term. Has he, if he hasn't resigned, he still holds the position.
Ms. Alexander, you've already spoken, you've said-
She should answer the question.
Well, hold on a second, I, I mentioned that, I'll mention that.
I don't even want to begin, this is, this is such a slap in the face to the man.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, stand by. Megan, you got a legal opinion on this at this point?
Just a moment, I'm pulling up the city code, that'll get me to the answer that I'm looking for.
All right, in the meantime, in the meantime, while you're doing that, make your presentation, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Call for a recess.
Don't want to re, let's let her make her presentation.
She's making a presentation on a position that's not even open yet.
Well, make her, let her make her presentation anyway.
Why, if it was you or anybody else, I would not want to hear the presentation until she ruled legally, because he still holds the position. It's like we're asking for somebody to be appointed to his position. How out of order is that? He's still serving, and we're going to listen to the presentation about somebody replacing him? He hasn't resigned.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, you want a recess? Is there a second to the recess? Is there a second?
Motion to recess.
Okay, is there a motion, is there a second to the recess?
The recess, the recess went till Megan finishes with the legal research on whether this is appropriate or not.
Okay. I can agree to that.
Okay.
I can second to that.
So you, you meant, just that? Okay, from Mr. Alexander, one, one second, Mr. Alexander and Ms. Gant, a motion to recess. All in favor of recess, please indicate.
I'll say that, because we need to know the legal ramifications.
Okay. Okay, so, so the mo-
Should or should not hear, we need to know the legal code behind whether or not-
All right, so we got three, your, 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 what's your decision?
I will oppose, because we haven't even heard the presentation yet.
All right, so three, one, the motion passed, have a recess for legal review at this point, all right? You can relax for a little bit, sir, ma'am. All right, so we'll take, how about, we'll take ten minutes, ten minutes, ten minutes of work, all right, ten minutes it is. We are now in a recess.
Hey, Kyle, I would say that most people-
...
Personnel, cybersecurity, real estate, or legislation of some type. Legal, I guess.
So isn't item number 10 off the agenda?
No, it's not off the agenda. Item 10, no, item 10 is not off the agenda.
It's not?
No. Why would it be off the agenda? I don't know, but it's not off the-
Right here?
He's over here, sitting over here.
Well, then I'd rather just do that and then come back to item number nine and make that the end of the executive session.
All right, we, we can do that too, I suppose. All right, so we, okay, I'll tell you what. So, all right, so we've ended our recess, okay? So if that's like a general consensus to have the number 10, Mr. Malazi speak at this point, we can have him do that. And then we'll, we'll, we'll circle back to the previous for executive session to do this other matter then. If that's good. Okay, Mr. Malazi? I'm sorry? All right, Ms. Malazi, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm presenting the, I'm, I'm pleased to let you know that we have eventually caught up with our bank reconciliation up to end of August. So what I'm presenting to you is the financial report from January through end of August. And I'm presenting this one in a summary form that will be, I'll be touching funds. So it will be general fund, then funds, then funds. Then come on the 13th of October, I'll be bringing to you budget amendment. You see some of the, the details, the report that you have. Some funds were not budgeted. This is an issue that was there in 2024 where it brought up that there was an expenditure of over $32 million, which did not have revenue, which is not correct. So budget amendment for it to budget, to balance, it has to have revenues and expenses. And that's what we'll be doing on the 13th of October for our budget of 2025. Because still 2025, we have some funds that we have revenues, but they were not brought before council for it to be approved. Then end of October, I'll be presenting our quarterly report for September, and that one will be in details. So that's when you have general fund in details, every department will be presented. But today will be a summary of funds.
Yes, sir.
So the first one here will be the revenues, general fund revenues. General fund, we budgeted for 2, 29.2 million. That's general fund. And as of end of August, we are at 14.2 million. That's general fund. And as you see, the second one is that's property and evidence. They didn't budget. There was no budget. But on the corresponding side, on year-to-date, you find that we have received there 9 million, 9,000. So budgeted nothing, they didn't estimate anything, but we have received. Those are the things that will be correcting come September, October 13th. Just to make sure that we have received revenues, therefore there should be a budget. And it has to come before council for you to approve it. Then we have Red Speed Fund. That's a new fund. So far, as you know, that we amended this one after the adoption of the 2025 budget. So that one, we budgeted for 1.5 and we have received so far as year-to-date as end of August. Then we have upper funds. Upper funds, you see in revenues, there's zero that we budgeted and we have received nothing. But when we go to expenses, you find out that there are a lot of expenses that have occurred on upper funds. Because it is, it was not there. We spent it in general fund. But projects are still there because we acquired to go with the upper funds until 2026. That's when upper funds will be completed. I will not be going to each and every fund in there. I'll also go down the line. There is URA. URA is what we budgeted for. That's the money, it's a revenue, but that will be transferred from general fund to pay the debt that we have. And that's the reason why you see that there's nothing that we have received on URA. Other. URA, we-
Zero.
We, yeah, we budgeted, what amount you are seeing, that amount is what we will transfer to pay our debt, to service our debt. So on the revenue year-to-date, there is nothing because we don't expect anything. In other words, we have not yet transferred to pay the debt.
Right, got you.
The other concern that we have, I think I've put it in the report, is enterprise funds. All enterprise funds, that's water, sewer, stormwater, and sanitation. The revenues are all down regardless of sanitation. It's the amount of money we receive, revenues we receive from there, they come from billing. Taxes are not yet out, but still revenues are going down. So we'll have to assess and find out what the issue about that, and we'll keep you posted. All the three revenues are down. Then we have, the last one that I'll have is the, no, the conference center. Conference center, we discussed during the retreat that the biggest expense that is in the conference center is the personnel. Personnel is put in the conference and sending it to 100 and something. So we are going to move that to put them into events personnel. So that at least we should be talking about 200, 200 and something for revenues for the conference center. But now it's talking about 700, and the biggest there is the personnel from events. And then we have the AMP Theater that we budgeted for 2.6. And 2.6, we have received a million. And we still have got some concerts to come. So that will be up to October, then we'll assess how much. But we are half of, almost closer to half of what we budgeted for. Budget amendment will clear out these budget negatives who go out. We'll transfer money from general fund to make it up for the shortfalls in revenues.
Okay.
I'm moving from revenues. If there's any question or comment on revenues.
Any questions for revenues at all, counsel?
Yeah, I'm just a little, I mean, this is the, this is the presentation we received that pretty much, I mean, we reviewed these numbers at the, at the retreat. So just kind of understanding, is it just, is just a need to just, this is pretty much what you sent us in the email, right?
And I added you details. That is true, yes, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Then we get into the expenses, general fund, as you see, general fund, what we have received and what we have spent. So general fund revenues and general fund expenses are almost the same, 14 million, 14 million. However, on revenues, there may be 14 million, but remember that the big chunk of the revenues of general fund, we have not yet received. So you have sales tax, we are one month behind. Then we have insurance premiums, that is the 3.5 million we are yet to receive in November. Then we have property tax, about 7.4 million is yet to be received, I think in December. So revenue may be down, but we'll catch up as we go receiving those three big revenues. That's a premium, insurance, sales tax, as well as the property tax.
Excuse me. It certainly looks like the T-Splus is overperforming with a $5.6 million projection that we've already collected.
That's another one. You see there that on expenses, we didn't budget anything. But we have spent money. And those are the things that we will correct, we will be correcting through budget amendment. On revenues, you see that we have received money on revenues, but on expenses, we didn't budget. So we didn't budget revenues and we didn't budget expenses, but we have received and we are spending.
Yeah, but certainly we, in the past with this particular situation, this is year-to-date.
Yes.
You know, I think, I think the last count, I think we had maybe 15 or 16 million dollars in the account. And we received this amount, this amount this year. So it certainly is, even though it might be trending that way, we need to get some of these projects done, which I anticipate we will actually do because we have money in the bank. But these numbers can be deceptive because, you know, it looks like, again, we're certainly exceeding what the projection was. And then when you look at it year, year-to-date, or you look at it year-to-year, it might look like it's balancing. But in the past, because we haven't spent those funds, we have accumulated quite a bit.
Yeah, as we said, that there were two sets of reports that were being made. And the reports that were being given to you to make wise decisions were not, so we misled you. But hopefully, these ones, I did bring them intentionally so that you can see them when we make budget amendment. All these zeros will be, will be gone.
Bro, I just want everybody to know where you're pulling the money from. You're pulling the money from because the money's in the bank, in these various accounts. You will be able to pull the money on the budget transfers because the money has already been collected in T-Splas and Splas and Splas 6. And you're not taking it out of general fund. You're taking that from the balances in these funds, correct?
So that of the 32 that is highly spoken about, these were expenses that were incurred through T-Splus, majority of them T-Splus. Splas 5, Splas, T-Splus, Splas 5. And now we have Splas 6 in 2025. So all those expenses had corresponding revenues. Of course, there were some that we had to transfer money, but the majority of all those expenses were from public works, that's to do with roads paving and many other projects. Citywide projects that were performed and the budget was zero. Upper funds, again, we spent a lot of projects paying for, paying for projects in upper funds. It was not budgeted. paying for projects in upper funds, it was not budgeted for. So that budget amendment, budget amendment was to make the balance, the budget balance. Or what would have been done originally when the budget was being proved, uh, provided to you to, to approve it, unfortunately, it was not done. So every penny of that amendment was balanced with revenues and expenses. Uh, water still the same, you'll find out on the water side. If you go on water sanitation, you'll find out that all expenses are higher than, uh, revenues. The budgeted amount and the expenses are almost closer. But revenues on the page that we just finished are much, much lower. But we'll assess, sit down and see, uh, how we can limit on that. That's the summary of, um, expenses. If there's a question on that one before I get into general summaries.
I have a question, one more still comment. Are these still from the previous administration, uh, financial director and city manager? The former, was this done during that re- regime still? Is that what we're doing here? We're still clearing that up?
So we are in twenty-twenty-five budget. Twenty-twenty-five budget was, uh, prepared last year.
Okay.
So the first correction of twenty-twenty-five budget will happen when we do our budget amendment on the thirteenth of October.
Okay, I got you. It was during that administration.
Yeah, so what you did was, uh, you accepted the audit of twenty-twenty-four. But from January twenty-twenty-five going forward, it's what we are trying to.
For twenty, okay.
Yes.
So you're getting us caught up.
That's correct.
Okay. And in regards to upper funds, I saw that it was zero in revenue, but there were some expenditures. Can you explain that?
Because when we got to upper funds, we spent them in general fund. So general fund has to make up for that because we still, we have an obligation to finish upper program in twenty-twenty-six.
Okay.
And we didn't account it properly and we commingled it in general fund.
You put it in, you commingled it into general fund, so that's why it says zero.
Which was not the right thing, yes.
Okay, is there a way to separate it, not at this time?
It's to fund, to make sure that all projects, all, uh, money that was designated for upper projects has to, as, as you remember, we were requested to give back two point two million because we didn't properly accounted for that.
But they're, they're refunding that back to us, is that correct?
No, we are not supposed to give them back because we gave them what they wanted.
Okay, good.
We met the, uh, we complied with what they wanted.
So great, so we didn't have to give it back?
We didn't have to give back. But the projects, the assigned money has to finish those projects. And the upper program is ending twenty-twenty-six.
Right, and it's been my experience, um, for these past, going on twelve years, that the franchise fees and everything that comes in very late at the end of the year actually catches us up, including Splas. It's always two or three million dollars more than what we projected it out to be. But they come in at the very end of the year, um, December, January sometimes. Cause I used to always worry and, um, through experience in the past, you, you'll see it now at thirty-one and then you'll get, when, what, around what time of year does the franchise fees come in? I think it's in, is it the end of December?
Uh, it depends on which ones, but by the end of the year, we should have all of them. Because like now, we already have got impact fees, they are already in.
Right.
So it's a throw-out, but there is a specific time when we get more depending on which, um, um, impact fees that you are talking about.
And just so everyone knows what those franchise fees are, they're like AT&T, Georgia Power, different companies and utilities, they have those fees and assessments. And then they pass that on to the municipality for usage, um, on, on their properties.
So those, uh, fees, franchise fees are the one that are levered from companies that are doing businesses in our city.
Correct, thank you.
Um, you, on the grant side, on the revenue grants, we have received a lot of grants revenues. And most of those grants are almost, almost all grants are reimbursable. So we spend money and we are reimbursed. And those monies were held up by various, see, federal state agencies because we didn't comply. But after we complied everything, we gave, we met all the requirements that they, uh, they needed from us. They have released those funds. And those funds will automatically go to general fund because the general fund is the one that was providing, uh, those money for grants to, to spend.
Okay, is there a reason why we're doing this tonight and not waiting until the franchise fees and actual depiction of money comes in to show the true budget of expenditures and revenues? Because it eventually bounces out? Is there a reason why we're doing the presentation tonight?
No, the presentation, because we have never presented it from Oc- uh, from January actually, because we were behind. We had expenses, but revenues we did not. So we didn't want to provide you information that has the limited, uh, that did not meet all the requirements. Without bank reconciliation, you can't say you are providing, uh, credible reports.
But was this not provided to us at the retreat?
Retreat was for the next, for, for the twenty-twenty-six budget projecting for twenty-twenty-six and where we are now. So it was where we are to help us for twenty-twenty-six budget. But this is actually reporting of what we have received and what we have spent as of August thirty-first.
Okay, I, I didn't know if it was a difference from what was reported, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
But I just, I, I, I see that, uh, so we really wouldn't amend this until those franchise fees and everything come, come in first, correct?
The amending is mainly to say there are some, there are some departments that the twenty-twenty-five budget didn't, the twenty-two-five budget did not balance. Because we have some departments that they are short for of personnel funding. And they will not finish, um, October if we don't do budget amendment.
Okay.
For example, one department has got three personnel that, uh, there will not be enough to finish. There will be not enough funding in personnel.
Because it wasn't budgeted for?
It was not budgeted for.
I recall that.
And there are some department, um, funds, as I've seen you, I've shown you, Splus six, uh, T-Splus. We are spending T-Splus, we have money, T-Splus is going on, but there's a zero budget that we budgeted for T-Splus.
Right, but those funds are for projects within the city.
And we are receiving revenues every month.
Right, okay, every month, okay, that's perfect. I, I just wanted to make sure that it's not something we're just, okay, that's good.
Any question, any comment on the revenues and expenses and general financial outlook? This is the summary of funds. General fund is one-line item on revenue, one-line item on expenses. Next report will have detailed for every department, how much we have spent and on revenues, how much we have brought in.
And that would be when now, next month? An amendment, no, an amendment to the budgets next month?
Budget amendment will be, be on the, and the financial report for the month of September will be for October.
Okay.
So we will be having a financial reports on a monthly basis.
Okay, good deal. Continue on please. There's a, there's a, is that the last slide?
Yeah, it's a summary, the, the rest, the, the rest is just summary.
Okay, I got it, okay. All right, good deal. Yeah, I was wondering about this, did you need to go through this at all?
Uh, I have explained most of those ones in my revenues and expenses.
All right, good deal.
I'm a little confused, I guess, Mary. I guess we were getting quarterly reports, now you changed it to monthly?
No, no, quarterly reports you get, but you, I'll be giving you monthly.
Okay, I just thought we were getting quarterly reports so we could kind of, cause sometimes when you're doing month to month, it can throw it off, just like now, you will see one month that goes way up and the next month that goes way down. The quarterly report, just like they do with, you know, sometime of the federal reports, now you can see a trend. Whereas you give somebody, you throw some numbers out there for, get somebody the wrong picture of what's going on.
What is your wish?
What, you, if you're saying, are you saying us, you're just emailing us?
I would, uh, update you with the details, then monthly.
Okay.
But if you've. No, 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 no. But if you feel like that one is too much, still let me know.
No, no.
No, no, no.
No, it's not.
Email me, that's fine.
Right, to get the updated thing, I just don't want to throw information out there where people don't understand, because they see something go up and down. They don't understand that the tax money is coming in in November. And they see, oh, all of a sudden this big gap in the budget. And then you don't see the revenue, understanding that the revenue is gonna come in in November.
Yeah, so you will see, we have to understand some of, you have to understand when your revenues are coming in. Because always expenses will be high and most of the revenues that we have, they will come very late. And even when you are doing audit, they give you three months, you can still. Because what we are receiving now, sales tax, are not for September, they are for August. So what we are receiving now are not, we received last month, we are not for August, we are for the previous month. And the insurance premiums will not come until October, mid of, uh, mid-November. Then we have our property tax that this year will come literally mid or after mid of December. Luckily enough, we have, will not make it to go and look for, we won't finish a year, even if we get late the property taxes.
Cause I just want to make sure that whatever we received, that we, of course, we see that everything and that they were, we won't, I don't see it and then I see something that catches my attention. I just want to be able to see, if I get October, I'd like to have the, the, you know, the month before, you know, a couple of months before so I can see the trend.
And in regards to, um, revenues, I would like to see the total of revenues from the previous year. So that I can kind of scale on what that looks like. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Like I, otherwise I don't know, I don't know what our franchise fee.
Where last year?
Right, cause it always, lately it's always increased about two to three million more than what we projected it to be. But it's just good to see what those fees are. So we can kind of compare of where we are.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Yeah, very welcome.
All right, on that note, uh, council, we need a motion, go in executive session, please. But for legal, personnel, real estate and cybersecurity.
Definitely.
Okay, well, actually, she says so moved, so.
I said.
Okay, Ms. Grant second that, unfair please indicate. Let's give that decision, let's go into the executive session. We'll be back, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be back, ladies and gentlemen.
I know, that's what they said, yeah, well.
It's cold.
Well, I don't know, it was number nine, right?
Um, yes. Actually, I got it. I just want to make sure, before I say anything, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, council, we need to, a motion to end our executive session, please. So moved, from Miss Barber, from Miss Barber and Mr. Berry, all in favor, indicate. Okay, now we need a motion to reconvene our city council work session, please.
Affirmative.
So for Miss Barber, back to Miss Gant, all in favor, please indicate. And from the executive session, ladies and gentlemen, a motion to adjourn the second session with approval of the affidavit with no action. So there's no action that we need to explain at this time for our executive session. On that note, I need a motion, well, actually, the motion to end our...
Mayor, we need a motion to remove item number nine.
Right.
I'll make a motion to remove item number nine, the appointment of the Main Street Board member. I make that motion because Councilman Alfonso Thomas still serves in that position, and I believe it the right thing to do to allow him to finish that out under the circumstances and appoint a new Main Street Board member in January at our convening organizing meeting. and appoint a new Main Street Board member in January at our convening organizing meeting as has been the custom for the city.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Berry, second motion, all in favor, please indicate.
Therefore, discussion, please.
One second. All in favor? Okay, okay, so I've got three votes for, and you say no or abstain?
Discussion, please.
Okay, well, you can have discussions, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I know that this item was placed on the agenda at the recommendation of the Main Street Advisory Board. Actually, the Chair of the Main Street Advisory Board made a recommendation to appoint me, Yolanda Barber, as a council liaison to the Main Street Advisory Board. He also recognized all of the hard work from Councilman Thomas, his tenure, the respect, the love, everything that he has put into the Main Street Advisory Board over the years. But he also mentioned that the Main Street Advisory Board had pretty much come to a crossroads. They wanted or need a council liaison. I am the only member of the council who is not serving on any of our city's boards and committees. Additionally, the Main Street, the downtown area, is in the district that I am duly elected to represent. I respect the council's decision to table this item until the beginning of the year, but I wanted to add those comments for the record because it was not a request by me to be appointed as a council liaison. That recommendation came from the Main Street Advisory Board. They made that recommendation just, I don't know, it was last month when they came before the council. So I wanted to add those comments and notes for the record. Thank you, sir.
All right, you're welcome. So otherwise, the motion is already made, and seconded, so what I, all in favor to motion to table this, and I already did that, was three votes for, three votes for, and your vote was to...
I will abstain.
Mayor, if I may, real quick. Just for the record, the protocol hadn't, not only that, my decisions are based off of the policies and the protocols of the way things are to be done, based off the Main Street policy was not adhered to. That's, that, for the record, there were several steps that are to be taken, and they had not been adhered to. That's what I need to state, not anything else, just, it was in black and white, there are steps and policies and procedures, and they have not been adhered to.
Motion passed, three zero one. On that note, announcements of upcoming events, let's see here. Starbridge Citizens Police Advisory Council, first Thursday of each month, at Starbridge Police Department Community Room at 6:00 PM on October 2nd. Youth Council Meeting, first Monday of each month, City Hall Levi Meeting Room at 6:30, October 6th. The Community Zoning and Information Meeting, Wednesday, October 8th, at City Hall and Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. Main Street Advisory Board Meeting, second Friday of each month, at 9:00 AM at Downtown Connection Center, 130 ML King, Senior Heritage Trail, October 10th. City Council Meeting, second Monday of each month, City Council Chambers, October 13th. Citywide Development Authority Meeting, second Tuesday of each month, 6:00 PM, City Hall Levi Meeting Room, October 14th. Youth Council Advisory Committee Meeting, date changed, third Thursday of each month, 6:30 PM, City Hall Levi Meeting Room, and that is October 16th. Planning Commission Meeting, Thursday, October 16th, at 6:30 PM, City Hall Council Chambers. Downtown November Authority Meeting, Board Meeting, third Tuesday of each month, 6:00 PM, at Downtown Connection Center, 130 ML King, Senior Heritage Trail, October 21st. Ethics Board Meeting, Wednesday, October 22nd, at Levi Meeting Room, at 6:30. City Council Work Session Meeting, last Tuesday of each month, October 28th, at 6:00 PM, City Hall Council Chambers. Join the City at Starbridge Police Department for International Coffee, copy, coffee, coffee with a cop day, Wednesday, October 1st, at 9:30 AM to 11:30 AM, at Starbucks on 1058 Eagles Landing Parkway. Join Mayor Pro Tem Gant at the free line dancing class, Wednesday, October 1st, at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, at Merrell Manor's Conference Center, Bring Your Own Fan, haul it to the hall, bring your household documents to the City Hall Parking Lot for free shredding on Saturday, October 4th, 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. The Muscle Mystique Car Show is back, Main Street is hosting this amazing car show on Saturday, October 4th, from noon to 4:00 PM in downtown Starbridge at 130 ML King Senior Heritage Trail. Join us for a live music, come dress in your vintage outfit and enter the costume contest, all ages are welcome. The 2025 Municipal Election Forum will take place Tuesday, October 7th, 7:00 PM, at Merrell Manor's Conference Center. Join Councilman Eldon Alexander for the District 5 Community Cleanup, yes, sir.
Correction, the date's going to be changed on that to November the 8th.
November 8th?
Yes. The community cleanup date will be changed to November 8th.
And that'd be still from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, so please meet at Costco Parking Lot on Jolica Road. Councilman Berry, in partnership with the Monthly Bingo Bash, on Wednesday, October 15th, 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, at Merrell Manor's Conference Center, lots of fun to be had by all, in conjunction with Councilman Thomas as well. Join the City of Starbridge for the Annual Breast Cancer Love Walk, Saturday, October 18th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, at Clark Park. More information, contact the Events Department at events@starbridgega.org. Join Mayor Pro Tem Gant for the Free Annual Fall Festival on Saturday, October 25th, at Clark Park, with candy, food trucks, games, costume contests, prizes and more. Join Mayor Ford, Anthony Ford, for the Monthly Meet the Mayor, Monday, October 27th, 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, the City Hall. Meetings are by appointment. Starbridge Main Street is hosting a Diabetes Awareness Walk and Health Fair on Saturday, November 1st. Registration begins at 7:30 AM. The 5K Walk will begin at 8:30 at Clark Park. The Health Fair will take place at 10:00 AM from noon at various locations throughout the park, whether permitting, or at Merrell Manor's Conference Center lower level. And the Economic Development Department hosts a free business health clinic on the second Thursday of each month, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. At Starbridge Connection Center, 130 ML King Senior Heritage Trail. Check your health and of your business with a free clinic. Councilman Thomas is honoring veterans with a continued salute all year long. Please send your pictures of veterans, their name, branch, rank and years of service. And let's see, sign up for real-time alerts about severe weather, road closures and emergencies on Regroup App. Visit the city's website or social media pages for more information on how and where to sign up. Stay safe. Please contact Rosalyn Rawls to schedule an appointment for Meet the Mayor. For more information on council initiatives, 678-833-3348, or by way of email, rrawls@starbridgega.org. And the 2025 council season comes to an end on Saturday, October 18th, with Detroit Gospel Legends, featuring Fred Hammond, Tony McClurkin, Anthony Brown, Vanessa Bell Armstrong, Lisa Page Brooks, Calvin Winans and Brian Cage. And this is the fall, ladies and gentlemen, flu shots, get your health in check for the winter months. Enjoy your football season, your favorite team, and have a fantastic and great, safe Halloween at the end of the month. On that note, council, I need a motion to end our meeting tonight.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, from Mr. Alexander and Miss Kent, all in favor, please indicate. Announced decision, good night, everybody, God bless you.